Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December the 4th, School Board Regul- Meeting. We call this meeting to order. Our mission statement. Our mission is to provide an excellent, equitable education in a safe, supported environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse, changing society. We have everybody stand. The pledge allegiance will be led tonight by, I mean, I'm sorry, by the choir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let me formally introduce University Park Elementary Falcon Choir.
Is this working? Check. Alright, this is the Falcon Choir. This is our choir made up of 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students from University Park Elementary School. They meet one day per week at their recess time that they give up so that they can come and sing. We have two songs for you tonight. The first one is a song called Joyful Israeli Canon, and the second is Somewhere In My Memory by John Williams from the movie Homemone.
Your love is a song forever, lift up your voice, hear all the people sing, the whole world rejoices. Singing out his struggles unto all the creation, hear all the people singing that's the nation. Your love is a song forever, lift up your voice, hear all the people sing, the whole world rejoices. Oh, singing it loud and clear, oh, it's a song for us to hear. Singing we all delight, in songs we all unite. Your love is a song forever, lift up your voice, hear all the people sing, the whole world rejoices. Singing out his struggles unto all the creation, hear all the people singing that's the nation. Singing it loud and clear, oh, it's a song for us to hear. Your love is a song we all delight, in songs we all unite. Your love is a song forever, lift up your voice, hear all the people sing, the whole world rejoices. Such a moment, special people, happy faces, I can see. Somewhere in my memory, there's just noise all around me, living in my memory. All the music, all the magic, all the family home. Such a moment, special people, happy faces, I can see. Somewhere in my memory, there's just noise all around me, living in my memory. All the music, all the magic, all the family home.
Thank you so much. We're going to have each of the singers introduce themselves and tell you what grade they're in.
Hi, I'm Gracie and I'm in 5th grade. I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, my name is Kena and I'm in 4th grade.
Hi, my name is Jada and I'm in 4th grade.
Hello, my name is Erica and I'm in 5th grade.
Hello, my name is Matilda Williams and I am in 5th grade.
My name is Maya and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Jordan and I am in 6th grade.
My name is Eve and I am in 5th grade.
My name is Daphne and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Erica, I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Dylan and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Cody and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Kirsten, I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Miracle and I'm in 5th grade.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, and can we have another round of applause? I think it's remarkable when we have students giving up their time to do music, and it could be out on the playground playing or whatever, but that's a great chore. Kate Sharon, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jerome.
Here.
Colonel Bondurant.
Here.
Colonel Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Mrs. Lambert is excused. Ms. McConnell.
Here.
Ms. Marotti.
Here.
Mr. Doran.
Here.
Mrs. Dominique.
Here.
The board has a call.
Thank you. Next, we will have 2018 Kids Voting Poster Writing and Podcast Contest Winners. Kids Voting North Alaska, in conjunction with the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, held a local poster writing and podcast contest for K-12 students. Michelle Dammel, Curriculum Coordinator, will make the presentation, and I'm on my way over.
So this year's contest received over 90 entries, based on our 2018 theme, which is "My Vote, My Right, and My Responsibility." We would like to recognize the first-place winners here this evening with a small gift and a framed copy of their entry. So for the poster contest, in first place, in the 3rd to 5th grade, we have Noella Maddox, a 3rd grader at Denali Elementary. If we could have her come up. And then if you could just stand there, Noella, because we're going to get all the poster winners. For the 6th to 8th grade, first-place winner is Mackenzie Albright, a 7th grader at Barnett Magnet. Is she here this evening? And in the high school division, 9 through 12th, first place is Kaylee Fulmer, a sophomore at West Valley High School. Thank you, guys. Do you have a hand for that? Oh, sorry. In the podcast category, we had entries in the 3rd to 5th grade and the 9 through 12th, and we have a framed copy of a transcript. I hope I transcribed it correctly. And first place for the 3rd to 5th grade is Coleman Martin, 5th grader from Hunter Elementary. So just stand right there. Soon, we're going to get the other person up. And then just stay put. In the high school is Michelle Ramirez, a sophomore at West Valley High School. And while they're taking their picture, one of Coleman's lines was, "You get your voice heard and you get to choose what you really want to happen." And Michelle, one of her sentences was, "Many people think my vote doesn't matter, or my vote won't affect the turn of the poll. But if thousands or millions of people have that mindset, we lose so much of our voice and power as a whole." In the writing division, in first place, again, is Coleman Martin, 5th grader at Hunter. In the 6th to 8th grade is Abigail Burkholz, an 8th grader at Barnett Magnet. And last on our list this evening is Aubrey Stacy, a sophomore at West Valley High School. Is she here? Her writing, so we will get her award to her.
Okay, can we have another round of applause for our students? 2018 ASAA First National Bank Bowl Series Division III Football State Champions. The Ben Allison High School Ravens football team will be recognized as the 2018 ASAA First National Bowl Series Division III Football State Champions. David Devon, Allison Football Head Coach, will make the presentation. Ms. Devon.
First, I'd like to thank you guys for having us up here again. This is kind of nice to have this group of guys recognized for all their hard work, and it's not just, it doesn't just start in August, it actually starts in like three weeks, so. But we had some scheduling stuff, we had wrestling happen tonight, we had basketball happen in the night, and I have to talk to the A.D. about why he scheduled all that stuff tonight. But, so we have like 12 of our players involved in that stuff right now, small schools, small teams, so I think we got four guys present, but I'll go ahead and read everybody's names off. Come on up when I call you guys. Ryan Armour, Scott Basden, Sylvan Carter, Peyton Devon, Colin Donahue, Deandre Ford, Scott Frye, Braden Groerud, Caleb Gumm, Jim Harp, Zach Hill, Xander Holmes, Doltan Homely, Connor Hottinger, Wesley Ingram, Mason Johnson, Jayden Manabuson, Amon Matthews, Will McManus, Brandon Polesky, Devon Price, Brock Rensen, Joey Rodriguez, Dorian Smith, Andrew Squires, and Tyler Williams. Now, again, thank you guys for giving these guys the opportunity to have sports in the district. Everybody needs to find their outlet, whether it's music, whether it's sports, whether it's drama. Thanks again for having us up here.
And we need to give them another round of applause. I don't know. I think Allison has been first placed in their division for how many years now? Two? Three?
Five out of the last seven.
Wonderful, congratulations. Okay, next we have ESP of the Month. Cody Oaks, Tannenaw Middle School Intensive Resource Paraprofessional Independence Coach, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for 20, December 2018. Jethro Jones, Tannenaw Middle School Principal, will make the presentation. Hi, Mr. Jethro.
Alright, this is an exciting opportunity. I'm excited to recognize Cody. We are consistently impressed by his drive and dedication to the students of Tannenaw. He's always trying to come up with new ways to help and reach the students he works with. It is not all uncommon for Ms. Hardy, his supervising teacher, to receive an email or a message from him on the weekend to run idea by her. On some way, he has thought to better help a student reach one of their goals, both in the classroom and socially. He is always willing to pitch in and lend a helping hand whenever a need arises. He is seen not just as an aid to a few students, but a classroom support person for anyone in the class, which improves everyone's learning experience. A story that specifically reflects how awesome Cody is, is that last year, three of our IR students told Cody they would like to attend Hutch. That was while they were in 7th grade, they're currently in 8th grade. From that point on, it became his mission to help them reach that goal. He created a poster titled "The Road to Hutch" with the application and graduation requirements needed to go there. This in turn made the students push themselves to want to work harder in math lessons, to learn their pre-algebra skills. Anytime last year and this year that the three need a push to try a little harder or persevere, Cody is there to remind them what we are working so hard for. Cody believed in them when others may not have, and it pushed all of them to excel. He is kind, compassionate, and unashamed to show that he is human. It is this last quality that Ms. Hardy thinks really sets him apart. He is not afraid to let students see his own educational struggles. He is completing his master's degree and will often use his own educational journey or struggles to show our students that not everything comes easy, but the important things are worth working for. He models daily what it means to work for your own dreams, even when the going gets tough. He daily inspires the students as well as all of us at the school to be better people. We can't imagine doing the job we do now without Cody working along beside us. Thank you, Cody. Come on up.
Okay, next we have the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Michelle Brooks, Arctic Light Elementary School 4th grade teacher, was selected as one of the Alaska finalists for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Thad Keener, Arctic Light Elementary School Principal, will make the presentation.
Congratulations. So, this award is the State of Alaska Presidential Finalist Award for Elementary Math and Science. So she is one of three finalists statewide for this award, and we're honoring her today for this achievement, because it may take upwards of two years to actually find out who wins this award. So to win this award, she had to be nominated, then she had a lengthy, over 10-page application process, and then hers was chosen. So Ms. Brooks is a teacher with a master's degree, she is nationally board certified, she has many years teaching at elementary school level. Several years ago, I had the unique experience of interviewing her via FaceTime outside of a McDonald's, because it has good Wi-Fi, as their family was moving to Alaska. So, a good story, and 'twas my lucky day that we got to hire her. She is recognized as a staff leader. With her sternness, her success is built upon relationships, that's step one, challenging them, doing real experiments with her class, and in short, she is a Miss Frizzle. Y'all remember who Miss Frizzle is? Maybe I'm dating myself, I don't know. Okay, alright, so, anyways, back in the olden days. To her personalized learning is challenging each student at their level. She uses Student Data Notebooks, and these are very hot items. Personally, I love sharing them with other teachers and other visitors. In her Student Data Notebook, she has her map scores, her map goals, her student reading levels, her fact fluency abilities, her bug club goals, and this is a relationship we have with Kiwanis and North Haven, the data from multiple math and reading group assessments that she has in her class. She is an old-timer, and I don't really mean that in any way, but she has been using Daily Five and Daily Three kind of math personalized learning systems for years. So she's definitely a leader for our personalized learning in our school. She has two children here, Tannenaw Middle School and Lathrop High School, they're involved in local hockey and cheerleading, and shout out to her daughter, who just won a national award for her cheerleading. And if I haven't mentioned it, I apologize, her husband is in the Army, and it's that wonderful connection that we have, working at Arctic Light, that she understands our community very well. Personally, Ms. Brooks has dove, she dived into our local running community, she's completed two Equinoch marathons, recently placed second in the Usabili Series for her age group, and she's just rocking it by staying active and healthy. She is a 21st century teacher. She's leading the pack with her skills, her disposition, and she's well-deserving of this Presidential Finalist Award, and congratulations. And even has a nice certificate too, right?
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Our consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items, not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member anytime prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. I think we have a motion to remove...
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items with the following changes. Remove new business item G5, Employment Waiver Request, and revise travel dates for consent item H4, Fundraising Travel Request. West Valley High School, the travel request has been revised from attending the Model United Nations Conference from January 23rd to the 28th, 2019, to attending the Model United Nations Conference from February 6th to the 11th, 2019, still in Boston, Massachusetts.
Sharon, do you have to call the roll on that? Okay, call the roll, please.
Colonel Bondurant.
Yes.
Colonel Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jerome.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McConnell.
Yes.
Ms. Marotti.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, presentation on agenda items. Oh, I've got to give you a turn, huh? Consent agenda, please, Ms. Tuttle.
The board has accepted the award in the amount of $1,457 for the Staff Development Grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, per fiscal note 2019-17A. Approve the Fairbanks Best 2018-19 Curriculum Notice. Approve Tiquisic Brown Elementary School's request to raise funds through various seasonal activities for students to purchase supplemental classroom items for personalized learning. They've approved West Valley High School's revised request to raise funds to send 25 to 30 students, two staff members, and a volunteer chaperone from its Model United Nations Group to Boston, Massachusetts, February 6th through the 11th, 2019, where students will participate in the Model United Nations Conference, with the district covering substitute costs, and if homeland security issues, travel warnings, students will not travel. The board has accepted the gift of $3,200 from John and Stacy Josie to Pearl Creek Elementary School for the purchase of emergency radios for classrooms. They've accepted the gift of $1,257.20 from Lathrop Fast Pitch to Lathrop High School to support the girls' softball team expenses. They've accepted the gift of $5,000 from Ann Tramorello to Lathrop High School to support the boys' and girls' basketball programs. They've accepted the gift of $12,150 from the Purple and Gold Choir Booster Club to Lathrop High School to support the choir's upcoming travel to New York. They've also accepted the gift of $5,000 from the Langston Family Foundation to West Valley High School to support the girls' basketball tournament. The board has accepted the monthly management reports for October 2018. Approve the minutes from the special meetings on May 22nd and November 5th, and the work sessions on November 5th and 26th, 2018, as submitted. They've approved the personal action report for the period October 27th through November 21st, 2018. The board has acknowledged the personal information report for the period October 27th through November 21st, 2018. The budget adjustment report for the period October 1st through the 31st, 2018. The board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Okay, so now I get my turn back, right? Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item, action item, or reports will have three minutes to testify when that item is before the school board for discussion. There is a limit of one hour total testimony per item. Then we're going on to Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Public comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People on the sign-up list will be called first. If there is time, people who did not sign up may address the school board. A person testifying must state their name and city of residence for the record. Board member and superintendent comments...I'm sorry. Members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately, as additional information may need to be gathered. And I have on the sign-up list, the first person is Ms. Cindy Apodaca. You'll have three minutes, and just state your state, your city of residence.
My name is Cindy Apodaca, and I live in Fairbanks, Alaska. Recently, the faculty and staff of our schools were sent a form where we had several things, and we were supposed to list what were our top three things that we thought were needed the most. And I've seen this form before, where we prioritize what we have in our district. And it's always rather demoralizing, because at the end, we seem to be pitting one department, one person against another. And since I'm a librarian, I thought I would just go ahead and start early, because the libraries have been on the cutting block every time that I have been before you. So, I took two days at the end of November, and I wrote down the things that I could remember that were most important, and I jotted these through the day. And I'd like you to hear what a librarian does. We do not sit around and read all day. If I had a dollar for every person who said that, I would be a rich woman and would not be sitting before you right now, I'd be in Hawaii. So, November the 28th, before school, we had 57 students in and out. We helped six students with copies and printing. I delivered a cart of books to a teacher. Two students came in, and I spent a half of a period helping them with Noodle Tools, databases, and Google Explore. We had a Chromebook cart checking in. We had a Chromebook cart that was checked out. An ID for a teacher, because they had equipment and it had gotten mixed up, and we needed to find out who that equipment belonged to. Three more students for Noodle Tools. Decorating for the holidays continued. Rearranged the tables. Fixed computers. Taught four how to sign in on the computer. Emails, junk flagged, and writing responses. Talked to assistant principal, read chair's breaking and the possibility of replacements. I emailed my principal to arrange a meeting. We checked out two Chromebooks to students. Responded to a student email, read the iPad that had not been checked in last year was on the record as being lost. However, it had been turned in. Our teaching assistants started on a project, boxing deleted texts, keeping track of the inventory we had deleted, taping up the boxes and carrying those to a pallet. Was working with a teacher on a Google Classroom problem. Talked to teachers, three, in person or on the phone. Our assistant principal came in to discuss the books that we had processed the day before for English, but we didn't know which teacher had ordered them. We put up lights, changed fabric, new decorations, that was part of decorating for the holidays. Had a conference with the teacher regarding a student's behavior. A conference with another teacher regarding my desire to collaborate with them on Web 2.0 tools for research, and that's Google Explore, Noodle Tools, databases, and how to do citations. The teacher declined. We had faculty meeting where we went over McKinney-Vento Act, Alice Training for Students the next day, and I think I'm probably out of time, and that was the end of day one.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, thank you for listening and for keeping us in mind.
One moment, we have questions from the board for you. Mr. Doran?
Yes, Mr. Doran.
Just one question, thank you for testifying tonight. The questionnaire that you got, was that for budget input, priorities for budget input?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Apodaca? Okay, thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
All right. Next, we have Cindy Roselli.
Stephanie Rosell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie. I read the first name, what's your last name? Need you to state your name and your city of residence.
My name is Stephanie Rosell, and I'm in Fairbanks, Alaska. And I'm here on behalf of the University Park PTA. So, dear school board members, the University Park Elementary PTA is here tonight to address some concerns that we have about district communication. We are hopeful that as you work on the budget for the 1920 school year and the strategic plan for the 2020 through 2025 years, that you would hear these concerns and look for ways to seek continued improved communication with parents, staff, and the community. We have three main points that we would like to address tonight. First, we feel the district is selective in what programs and information it chooses to share with parents, staff, and the community, and we wish that the district would be more transparent in all areas. In the past two years, the district has chosen to adopt Alice Training for the schools and is in the planning stages of establishing another charter school in North Pole, as well as a K-12 magnet school. The current strategic plan states that effective communication should be two-way and should enable and encourage student, parent, and staff, and community connectedness. However, many of our members feel that despite quarterly newsletters from the district office, we are still uninformed. The Alice Training was adopted and rolled out as a surprise to most of our members last year, and the current K-12 magnet school planning page on the district website is extremely difficult to find unless a person knows exactly where to go. There was one email about it in June of 2018, after school was released for the summer, and parents were not actively reading about school news, and nothing has been said since that time. These do not feel like acts of connectedness that the district strives for in its strategic plan. Secondly, we feel that the surveys sent out to parents and community members are flawed. The recent survey soliciting feedback for the 2020 through 2025 strategic plan, for example, was full of ranking systems and multiple choice answers with limited space for parents to give written comments. This type of data collection limits feedback to prescribed choices and appears to set up, appears to be set up to yield predetermined results instead of truly seeking the heart of parent and community concerns. And finally, we would like to see the district communicate more with parents and community members after a program has been selected, not just reporting on the project steps implemented. But the district should do more to seek actual feedback from stakeholders about how people are responding to what's in place. For example, the district is in the process of implementing personalized learning throughout the district, but it has not sought parent or staff feedback regarding how our children are responding to it, other than collecting test scores. This lack of follow-up communicates that the school district is going to continue on its course regardless of how stakeholders feel about it. We feel that the school board and the district administration have the best intentions for our children, but the concerns that we listed create a sense of distrust, and we would like to see this improved. Thank you. Sincerely, the University Park PTA. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for Ms. Roselli? Mr. Jerome?
What would be an example of a more effective communication method regarding something like Alice Training or personalized learning? Because we do, we do open up the floor at school board meetings, but what would be a more effective way for parents and stakeholders to be engaged?
In our PTA meetings, we've talked about ways that the district and the school board could promote their agendas more clearly. I know it's posted on the website, but as a parent, we have a lot of, we have kids, we have schedules, and sometimes those things just get overlooked. It may be there, but it's not being communicated directly to us all the time.
Appreciate these comments, and they're very helpful. And I want to broaden it just a little bit, if you have any thoughts on not only communication to parents, but also the broader community, so that non-parents in our community who are interested in our schools have this information is...I see some real parallels in the suggestions that you're making, but if you have any thoughts on that also, how we can...
You know, I know that the school board meets at night, and you guys, they broadcast it, but it's honestly when, like, we're doing dinner and we're getting ready for bed, and it's not convenient for me as a parent to listen to it. So if there was a way, I think, and this is me talking, not our PTA, so, but off the cuff as a parent, I would say, I would really love a podcast of this later, and that might be something so that we can get to it as parents, we can access the information and have it on hand. You know, audio, any way that we can, we can have access to information, because it feels like some of the things just happen when it's inaccessible to us.
Mr. Marotti?
Sorry, two questions. And first, thank you so much for your testimony. That means a lot to all of us. It's a way that we can learn and listen. But I have two questions. The first one is, I know that there are several committees within this whole district that are, have many vacancies on their committees, parents, community members. Is there, in your opinion, and from the PTA, is there any interest in those folks sitting on those committees to be more involved with the decision-making?
I know that our PTA publicizes those on our Facebook page, and we try to put it in newsletters as we see things come up, and so, and we do have parents from our school that are on some of the committees. I know for sure the Title One, we've had parents on that. Speaking from, just for myself, again, not the PTA, because I was reading a letter from them, but I think just actively putting it on your Facebook pages, looking for things, continually reminding parents, and then advertising what the time commitment is. You know, we're all pretty busy, and so, when it comes time to a commitment, we need to know exactly, how many times are we going to be meeting? How long will those meetings last? And we need to know the end date of our commitment. So if we know the start date and the end date, it's, I think it's easier to get people to commit to things.
That is super helpful, thank you. Also, Sharon, can you remind me, do we post the audio for the school board meetings online? So there is audio available on the k5northstar.org website that you can listen to afterwards. I know dinnertime is sometimes a crazy time, so, definitely we'll try to spread the word about that.
Great, thank you.
One other thing, not so much a question to you, but I think it's to either Dr. Gaboric or Sharon. There was a listing that was sent out, I want to say last year, of all the committees, the days that they were going to be meeting. I don't know if you had the timeframe that they're meeting. Is that something we could send to her for her PTA?
Certainly we could, and we've...
Because we do have vacancies.
Yeah, and we've posted on the website, and we use our social media platforms to advertise those.
Okay, okay. So we'll have it sent to you, so you can see that listing of the committees that have openings and things of that nature.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Doran has a question.
Just a quick question to keep me up to date. I know U Park PTA has been a great promoter of the ASK program, and are you still continuing that? And do you know if other PTAs have picked up on that?
We are. I would say, we've been doing it for, I think, three years now, and the district has actually taken that on, and so they printed cards, I believe, for all of the schools, Dr. Gaboric. So, yeah, where our school and our PTA has been paying for that, the cards were distributed district-wide this year.
Okay, well, thanks to your PTA for helping to initiate that.
Definitely. I have copies of this letter. Who can I give those to? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. You have questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Roselli, one more question, I'm sorry.
You mentioned the personalized learning suggestion for parents. Have they come forward to either send an email or discuss that within the building?
You know, as a, I'm the PTA president at this school right now, and I think a lot of what I hear when it comes to personalized learning is still confusion among parents. And I, when I talk about asking for feedback, I think, understanding that maybe parents don't always understand what it is, or there's misconceptions about what it is, is really important. Parents that don't like it often maybe don't understand it, or they're not getting the full picture of what we're, what our end goal is. And so soliciting feedback from parents as part of that ongoing assessment is important. We can't, we can't, as a district, just say, "We're doing this," and then just keep pushing forward without knowing, and comforting parents along the way, and just helping them fully understand what's happening. And again, that was me, not our PTA. Thank you.
Mr. Jerome has the question.
One more. So, you mentioned, you know, a better way for parents to communicate their students, students, maybe issues with the personalized learning. Do you have any of those student issues that you could share?
Can you say that one more time?
So you said that there was maybe an issue with the two-way communication, with parents communicating to the school district what their students' concerns have been. Do you have any examples of those concerns that students have had?
I don't, from my own kids. I think they don't always know what personalized learning is, they just know what they're doing in their classrooms. And so, I don't know that they always firmly understand that when they're doing different things in their classroom, it's being personalized to them. And so that would be a good question, I think, to ask of students and ask of parents. Do you understand how this is working just for you, and how what you're doing is different from maybe what your classmates are doing?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Roselli? Okay, I guess we're off the hook.
Can I also tell you, it's Ms. Rosell.
Rosell, okay, Ms. Rosell.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, and next we have Sharon Baring. Need you to state your name and your city of residence.
So, good evening. My name is Sharon Baring, and I live in Fairbanks. And I am here on behalf of the Fairbanks Council of PTAs, which, for those who are not familiar, it's a platform that allows all PTAs, all the schools, to come to and share ideas, share concerns, is that too close? To share our concerns and find our common ground, and ultimately try to be constructive in the feedback that we give the board and administration. So, I'm here representing that committee, or that organization, and U Park is one of our members as well. So we met this last Saturday and heard that U Park was planning to bring their concerns to you, and so I am here to testify that the Fairbanks Council of PTA actually does affirm the message that you just heard. And in hearing that they would be speaking tonight, we were moved to go ahead and add a few of our own additional talking points. So firstly, we want to say thank you, because we understand that the district this year has required that all schools now accept the same student-teacher ratio based on grade levels. I'm getting a lot of feedback, is that...
I think sometimes you get too close to it.
Is that too close?
Just a little, but we need to hear you in the mic. Those mics are finicky.
Okay, can you still hear me?
I can still hear you.
All right, that works better for me.
Is she still good, Sharon?
Okay, yeah. That was just really distracting, so. So anyway, we're appreciating that you adopted that move, because we were really having a hard time justifying that charter schools had the ability to cap class sizes when all the other schools were forced to accommodate who was coming in through their doors. So we appreciate that, and thank you. Second, I know that we shared this with many of you last spring in our emailed minutes, but we thought it would be important to say it out loud now, for those of you who are new on the board, and for any parents that are listening, especially in light of hearing that there are new, more charter schools and magnet schools being developed. So please know that at this time, the council does not support any further development of charter or magnet schools in this district. We believe this movement has been fragmenting us and not differentiating us. We instead ask parents who are dissatisfied with their students' neighborhood schools to bring their concerns and ideas and energy to that school in order to make it better, more inclusive. And we ask that they join with us at our only monthly PTA council meeting, so that we can better hear what their concerns are and their needs are, and find ways together to answer them within the system that we already have, especially at this time of financial Third, and somewhat related to that last point, we ask that any rollout of the personalized learning initiative not lose sight of our shared communal values, such as being each other's keeper, generosity and volunteerism, mutual support, care and respect, personal initiative, and personal contribution to a smooth functioning community. For as the saying goes, illness starts with an... For as the saying goes, illness starts with an I and wellness starts with we. Finally, we want you to understand that we believe that one of our greatest assets in this public school district and in this community is our diversity. We also recognize that tending that diversity takes skill and attention and these things are not necessarily universally taught or practiced at home. And schools have historically been in the business of supplementing what we are learning and practicing at home. So the council strongly supports time and resources to be allocated to the learning of what we call soft skills. The social and emotional literacy, self-regulation skills, nonviolent relationship development and conflict negotiation. For we see that these are the necessary tools for all students to experience success, happiness and the ability to constructively contribute to all aspects of our communal life together.
We had a little bit of disruption when you started, so we're giving you extra time, but are you about to wrap it up?
I am, yes. I'm just saying thank you again. So thanks for your own example of generosity, volunteerism, care and respect, and for your own personal contribution to making our community, community function more smoothly. I know our children are watching and I am also inspired, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Mr. Dorn?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it and for what the central council does. And pleasure to work with them over the years. Two things. One is that your, the council's appreciation for trying to keep PTR as low as we can because we have had those conversations regarding the, the class sizes. We can't, charter schools can make their own decisions regarding that and we don't really have a control over that. But your other piece about support, we certainly have a great say in the magnets. The charters are a little bit harder the way state law is. And I just want to ask if the central council with your legislative committee has looked at advocating for some considerations at the, in state law that may put a cap on the number of charters in some way or doing like that? That's, that's a big conversation at the state level. And as we've had years with number charter schools coming on, the numbers come up and impacts are greater. So legislative council has that as one of their priorities?
So at this point, we don't have an active legislative council member. We don't, we don't have a, we have an executive committee and that's it.
Okay, all right. And then maybe as it goes on, even PTAs addressing that to, to the legislature also for their consideration? Because that can help us.
Yeah, we've definitely been involved in, in advocating for funding. So more than ad hoc than as a, an active committee. But yeah, I guess I wasn't aware that that was specific funding for charter schools that was separate from allocation for all of education.
It's not separate, so I don't want to get into too much of the weeds of it. But, but just in terms of some of the concerns you have for the numbers of charter schools as they come forward that you might want to consider advocacy or some conversations with legislators on that.
Ms. Anderson.
So at the time, when personalized learning was being rolled out in the district, did your council come before the board or express or communicate any frustration or strategies concerning the personalized learning?
Did the council come before the board? No, we have, we have not spoken out in the last couple of years about much. We've sent our minutes and our minutes have minuted our, our discomfort with some of, you know, a lot of it had to do with the pace of change, that things were just, you know, it's hard to stay abreast of what's going on. And it's hard to maintain a spirit of trust and goodwill when we're feeling overwhelmed. Move at the pace of trust.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask, what day do you have your meetings for people that might want to come?
I knew you might, I knew you might ask that. So it's, we try to do it on the first Saturday of each month. It's at Ryan, Ryan Middle School from 10 to 11 is the open session. And we truly have tried to keep it open and responsive. It's brainstorming, it's sharing, it's learning. It's, and we've had great diversity of, you know, Arctic Light, North Pole, Pearl Creek, U Park. Sometimes Hunter. We've had some good variety of, of the community that's, that we have.
Yeah, we've gotten your minutes in our reading packets before, so I'm happy that you're still moving on. Thank you very much for your testimony. Next we have Kate Wool.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Kate Wool. I'm from Fairbanks. Welcome to the new board members and thank you for listening. Many of the points I've come to communicate have been stated already, so I'll try to make this brief with my personal views as some of you have seen me here before. I too am disappointed in the communication between the district administration and the community. I see it lacking transparency and its top-down implementation of policies with disregard to research and reflection. I've been in Fairbanks for 26 years. I have many friends who work throughout the district in many different positions. Friends who are or were teachers, principals, staff, counselors, nurses and aides. Many of my friends are discouraged by the administration and its direction and won't come here for reasons of job security. Please raise your hand if you have children in the school district.
Have had. I had some before, not right now.
Please raise your hand if you have been in a school this week, this month. Okay, that's making me happy. As elected officials, I strongly encourage you to get out of this building, away from administrators and spend time in the schools, talking to parents, staff, teachers, nurses, counselors, students and principals before you make any decisions on new policies. Many parents choose charter schools for their kids to attend not because it's a K through eight model, but because they are not happy with district policies. Some of the homeschoolers are, same with the homeschoolers, excuse me. Our nurse, Nurse Sharon Baring, one of the most valuable, amazing, kind caregivers I know, is leaving because of some district policies. Teachers are unsatisfied with the lack of research, involvement and feedback for new policy adaptation and analysis. When Alice was adopted, no one in our school had heard about, was asked about it, educated on it, not our counselor, our nurse, our teachers or staff. When you spent millions on software for personalized learning, no one was asked about what they were already implementing without the software. And still, no one has come to research feedback or reflection of this astronomical investment and in my opinion unnecessary. You cannot be a successful district without involving the people closest to the students. They are the most valuable asset for all new ideas. The school board needs to spend more time in the trenches researching morale, asking questions and talking to everyone in the school. Flawed surveys are not communication. Adopting policies without feedback from the very people who will be implementing them is not communication. I believe in public education and I'm a strong proponent of it, but you cannot have strong public education without the public. And the district needs to do a better job involving all of us. I will close by sharing five links on current adopted policies I have been unhappy about. Alice, Bring Your Own Device to School and the Personalized Learning Assessment. I encourage you to read and listen to them in hopes of opening your eyes beyond this building and hopes of inspiring you to start off 2019 with fresh eyes and ears and focus on the public part of public education. The articles that I have to give you copies of are: Number one, The Backlash Against Screen Time at School. Number two, A Dark Consensus About Screens and Kids Beginning to Emerge. Number three, The False Comfort of Securing Schools. Number four is a Podcast Before the Next One. There's No Rulebook on How to Handle a School Shooting and No Real Way to Prepare for One. And number five, an interesting article that was just in a paper today, Personalized Learning Without Devices and Expensive Software. Thank you for listening and I really encourage you to get out there.
Thank you very much for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Wool, Ms. Marotti?
Got a question, just to thank you for coming in and speaking with us and taking into consideration the newer board members and also for the articles. And just to let you know, I will read every single one and I appreciate the opportunity to learn from them and from you.
Thank you.
I would like to also say thank you for your testimony. We really appreciate the information coming to us. We talk to the superintendent all the time about the testimonies that we receive, so you will see changes. Thank you. Okay, you can give them to Ms. Tuttle and she'll make sure we get them. Next, Mr. Dan Hackett, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hackett. I live, I live in Fairbanks, but sort of in Fox a little bit. I'm a teacher, a parent. I work for UAF. I have two kids who have been through the district, one kid in the district. And the last three testimonies are going to get me sidetracked. So I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the last three people who testified, especially the concept of personalized learning. The district is pushing it quite a bit. And as a teacher, I have to deal with the parents who had a teacher who covered it beforehand and the parents weren't happy or the kid didn't learn as well. And there seems to be no mechanism. The district is forcing that on, on, on parents. And if we really want to have choice, I think there needs to be, or you need to set up a device so parents who don't want their kids to deal with all that screen time have another option. And I for one, want nothing to do with the system. I want my kid in a classroom, interacting with people and having the diversity of teachers and how they choose to do things. I do not want that. So I really appreciated the last three. All right, now let me try to see if I can get through it in two minutes. Here we go. Today I'm here to talk about staffing problems facing the district. There are several teaching, there are several teaching positions that have gone unfilled throughout the district or that the administration is relying on teachers to give up their prep time to cover these shortfalls. Qualified, qualified substitute teachers are really hard to find lately. And it means basically that aides, secretaries, teachers, principals are giving up their time to fill the gap to cover classrooms. The biggest problem in the last couple of years, I went from never having to substitute teach to having to teach quite a bit during an emergency when a teacher's gone and there's no subs available, which means I'm giving up time, I'm not prepared. And the poor kids in the classroom aren't learning as much at all. These are really major problems that directly impact the classroom and the teacher. The teacher contract is coming up. And the leadership, I think, really needs to find a way to retain more teachers because the hiring pool is empty. When I started my first interview, I had to wait out in the hallway before they'd even see me for my interview. And during my last couple of experiences, as we're looking at very few people to, to apply for a job and because teachers are giving up their prep, it means there isn't anybody for us to hire. I love my job and I sort of like most of my students, but not all of them. I've always appreciated how rewarding teaching can be and I like my job. However, all the little stuff, the administration, the regulations, the top-down choices are really creating problems for some of us. You have a workforce that in the last couple of years have received less than 1% raise over a three-year contract. And we're losing more and more money basically to our healthcare system. I know this is not unique, but I really think the scales have shifted and you guys really need to think about how to deal with the lack of people in the hiring pool. Because of the retirement system, young people don't want to come here and I would actually tell people not to. Older teachers like me, there's not a lot of reason for me to be here anymore. When I'm getting grief from the administration, I'm not being heard, the communication is poor. There's a bunch of us who are going to leave. And I think because there's nobody in the hiring pool, you need to figure out a way to keep older people like me around and you need to figure out a way to get younger people here. If you really value quality education, you need to start attracting young keeper, young teachers and keep me around. I know basically money's tight, but you really have to find a way to either improve our working conditions or you need a way to figure out to give us a raise coming up. I think you're in a lot more trouble than I think you realize. Okay, I'm in this school every day and I know darn well that there are classrooms where you don't have a sub. I know more than a couple of teachers who have given up their prep because you can't find somebody to hire. So there's a big problem coming up and I'm afraid that the administration is going to ignore it.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Hackett. Any questions? Ms. Marotti?
Thank you for your testimony. You mentioned that it's hard to find quality subs and I agree completely. I mean, the, the writing is on the wall. In your opinion and in your experience, what do you think the district, what are some ideas that the district could do to attract more subs or retain them?
It's a tough job. It's like a bus driver. I wouldn't want to be involved with a small bus on icy roads with that many kids. For a person without edu, without a teacher certification to be in a classroom with 30, 30 kids in management. When I started teaching, a sub would actually grade the work, do all of that and actually teach the lesson. You would have math subs. It's very rare. You're lucky to get somebody who can take attendance and pass out the crap you give them. You know, to be point blank, you need to pay people more and that includes us. I'll be more than happy to share my thoughts to where money should come from. But you need to, to change the dynamics. Alaska isn't a place where I would tell young people from UAF to work. Okay, and that, that saddens me to have to say that, but I think you need to know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorn? Oh, I thought you had your hand. Mr. Alden?
So with your first comment about personalized learning and the screen time, the nature of that, do you see, you know, as a teacher who's in the classroom, this is, you know, it's being rolled out. It's sort of at this point inevitable that personalized learning is going to be implemented. And in my classrooms, I'm seeing personalized learning, you know, be implemented. And a lot of it doesn't involve screen time. So what suggestions do you have to other teachers and to the district as a whole for if they personally don't want to see as many screens, but they still need to personalize their learning? What are some of the options that you've seen?
I don't think we need to personalize learning. I think that has to do with the teacher and I've been told since day one that we're already doing this. We're paying millions of dollars for a system that we were told that we're already doing it, that you're already doing it in the classroom and we just need to communicate that we're doing it. Having a diversity of teachers is personalizing. There are students who don't connect with me, but connect with other people. You can't connect with everybody in the thought of, from a math point of view, a thought of, you know, 15 kids or 40, 40 kids in a classroom where everybody's at a different pace. In terms of time management, it's not realistic unless you generate some computer program. So I'm fearful of it and I know more than a couple of examples of middle school kids coming into high school where the parents, the first thing they say to me during parent-teacher conferences is how upset they were from their experience with personalized learning and that it's nice, nice to have a traditional teacher. So I think all of that is, you know, I have no trouble with other people doing it. I think parents need to have an option between choosing me in a more traditional way and somebody else who does it differently. All of that's okay.
Do you believe that traditional teaching can be, it is personal by nature?
It's always personal. Everything I do is dealing with people. When I, when I interact with a kid and you give them a zero or they don't do well, I, I grade more than just the curriculum. And I think that's a gigantic error that our school district is again moving towards when they talk about mastery learning and just a checkbox. Put a kid on a computer in a math class, you get four multiple choice questions right and you've now mastered the subject. And a classroom has to do with your conduct, whether or not you're doing the work, doing your work in a timely fashion and doing a pace. All of that's critical and it's critical in terms of success. It's okay to fail. It's okay to get a C. It's okay. You know, the interaction in the classroom is important. And having a diversity of teachers who do things, not all in one way, but do things in different ways makes it very powerful. And I'm afraid when we talk about personalized, I'm afraid that there's nothing personalized about this. You add an IZ, IZE in it and it makes it more of a computer industrial. You add an IZE in it, and it makes it more of a computer-industrialized model where every single kid in every class is sitting in front of a computer in a little group. I want to see the diversity of teaching. Teachers who love that method, who interact with it, who inspire kids, that's great.
Thank you.
But you don't want it, and I'm positive there's community members who don't want anything to do with it. And I, as a parent, want nothing to do with it. I don't want my child in it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Hackett, for your testimony. We have no one else signed up. Anybody else would like to step forward, give your name, and place the residence? How long have we gone so far, Sharon?
I'm going to be really quick.
Okay. I'm not trying to make you rush.
And I just had a couple of quick comments. Tammy Smith, and I'm from Fairbanks, and I am, first of all, I'm very glad to see Choi up there, smiling at me for the first time. But anyway, so I am the NEA Director for the State of Alaska, and I just want to say how thrilled I was to see the Red for Ed campaign start tonight. I actually missed the picture. I wore my red all day, and I missed the picture. But what I like about it is that it is going to put a spotlight on education in this state, and education around the country certainly has gotten a spotlight because of Red for Ed. And I wanted to give just a little bit of a history about it, because it started as, you know, we saw all of these different states across the country dealing with funding, dealing with pensions being lost, and dealing with, you know, the schools and states wanting to really stand up for their students and stand up for their schools. And so in Arizona, I just feel like it's kind of necessary that you realize that the movement of Red for Ed actually came out of Arizona, and it was started by a second-year teacher, who was a music teacher, and she talked to their state president, their state NEA president in Arizona, and she said, you know, "We should buy T-shirts and do something statewide." And he said, "If you can get everybody in your campus to wear red, then we'll talk." And so she and a couple of her colleagues started wearing red T-shirts and got everyone in their school to start wearing red T-shirts. And it went from a school of thirty to, pretty soon, a campus full, with teachers, parents, and staff all wearing it, and then, pretty soon, in the state of Arizona, it was thirty thousand individuals wearing red T-shirts, and then, pretty soon, seventy-five thousand teachers, school board, PTA members, and alike, all standing up for education by wearing red. And so we can do that, and that's what, I guess, my message today is that, you know, as a school board, thank you for starting this, and I encourage the PTA members that are here tonight especially to join in, and because it is going to take teamwork, and it is going to take us standing united and asking for the right things for our students. So I just thought I would share that, and just remember that one candlelight's a thousand, and that's where we need to go with this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith? I just wanted to let Ms. Smith know, I can't wear red every day. But I still...
On Tuesdays, perhaps.
Okay, on Tuesdays, okay. Anyone else would like to come and give a testimony to the board?
I'll play.
Just need your name and place the residence.
Hi, this is Brandy, and I'm from Fairbanks. I hadn't intended to speak at all, but something somebody said kind of moved me to. I'm a teacher, and the sub shortage is real, desperately real, all across Fairbanks, and having to give up lunches or preps or all kinds of things is there too, but it also really hurts our students. And one of the things, because I was previously tenured in the district from military and then moved back, that we had a few years ago was building subs, and they were a godsend. They were amazing. They were people we trusted. They were people who knew our kids. They were people who helped when we didn't need a sub. It was just phenomenal, and you convinced people to take that job because it came with benefits, because it was a full-time position. And I would highly encourage you to consider bringing back a building sub to the buildings. We can't find subs other ways. Maybe it's time to go back to something we do know worked, and I know that it also, as a teacher, helped a lot of those teachers, because I've worked at Hutchison, I've worked at Hunter. The ones that started out as building subs became teachers, because there is also a real critical shortage in teachers, especially in what I am, which is a special education teacher. You can't find us. We don't exist up here. It's very hard to fill those positions. Once you start getting people in the schools and meeting these kids, you can inspire them. Currently, the person you met today, Mr. Oaks, is going to become a special education teacher, and that's because he was an IRA, and that's because he's part of the schools and has a full-time benefit, that he can look for getting something at the university. So I highly encourage you to consider bringing back building subs.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Mr. Dorn?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name.
Brandy.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else would like to come forth? Seeing none, we're closing public testimony. Now we're on to information and reports. Our goal, effective communication, woo, after that testimony. Anyway, establish relevant, inclusive, and consistent two-way communication to enable, encourage student, parent, staff, and community correctness with the district, and intense, and increase the diversity of voices within the district. Andrew DeGraw, I didn't know your name was spelled like that. Nice spelling. Chief Operations Officer will present the Budget Committee's report and recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Dominique. It's my pleasure to present to the Board of Education our 2018 Budget Committee Report. We held several meetings, four meetings over a two-month period of time, covered a wide range of topics, revenue expenditure side of the budget, budget structure, different impactors of those items, so kind of a complex conversation you can have on the various range of things that can impact revenue, can impact expenditures, so we had a lot of robust dialogue on those topics. We talked about economic impacts, political, the political environment that we currently find ourselves in, wide range of topics, all of which have an impact of the budget and the budgeting process. We also talked about the role of the Budget Committee and the different ways that the committee can approach the topic of budgeting. We talked about staying out of lower-level, getting into the weeds is kind of a term that you use often, and we talked about the committee having a strategic, high-level approach to encourage the district to focus on certain strategic initiatives to help the overall budgeting decision-making process. One quote, along those lines, I'd like to take one quote from page one of the report. It talked about the under-scope and function of the Budget Committee. It talks about the committee's role in ensuring that the district's budgeting process has a long-term perspective and is not simply an exercise in balancing revenues and expenditures one year at a time. I think that's particularly relevant in the current environment that we find ourselves in, the need for long-term strategic planning, as opposed to just focusing, having a narrow approach to one year or another. And then also, one other note from page one in the Budget Committee Working Principles, we consistently talked about recognizing the strategic plan as a guiding document for the committee and its points of input and feedback. Jumping to page two of the report, looking at the various points of inputs that the committee felt were important to have on the table. The first point is centered around the district having a part in encouraging the state to come up with a more competitive retirement plan. We had a lot of discussion about the current plan as it stands, putting the state at a competitive disadvantage, so to speak, in recruiting, not only recruiting, but also retaining qualified educators and other staff members. There, you know, there is something to be said for defined benefit plans, or a traditional pension, being less and less common out in the private industry, but in the public, in governmental entities, those defined benefit or pension plans are still the norm. Roughly eighty percent of the states and municipalities that the State of Alaska is competing with for a limited pool of educators still use those defined benefit plans. So the committee strongly, felt strongly that that was an important thing to focus on. Number two, there was a conversation centered around the district implementing a more systematic approach to technology integration within the various sites and schools across the district. There's a variety of factors from site to site that could lead towards maybe an imbalanced or different approach to technology integration from one site to another, and the committee felt that it would be beneficial to come up with a more systematic approach. As the district increases its investment in and rollout of devices in the hands of students, the committee felt like it was very important to systematize that rollout or integration across the district. The third point was centered on fund balance, and we had a lot of dialogue and conversation about this topic. I know it's been something that the board has worked on, and administration has worked on extensively over the last twelve to eighteen months, and the committee felt that the district should continue that dialogue, that strategy, and really balance two things. Balance, first and foremost, having a consistent educational product that the district maintains and continues to provide for students, and secondly, that the district balances as much as it can that with preserving fund balances for the long term. And again, a lot of factors in play as far as what we can expect at the state level as far as revenue is concerned over the next two or three years, but certainly that there's not a lot of optimism on increasing revenues in the near term, two to three years out. So preserving that fund balance while the best we can maintain the level of educational services that we're providing to students. And then the last item is centered around establishing staff allocations at the various sites within the district that are consistent. So a staffing allocation model that allocates resources consistently district-wide. The district is in the process of, last year implemented my budget file, or MBF, as far as a valuable tool in the budget process, and that's facilitated us, and we continue to fine-tune this, but the committee felt like it was important to continue towards a district-wide staff allocation model, again, to consistently allocate resources across the district. At the bottom of the second page lists out the various members of the committee. For my part, it was a pleasure for me to be a part of this process. Very, relatively new I am to the district, and it was, I think the timing was excellent for me to be able to meet people, to have conversations and good dialogues centered around what's important to the school district as we approach the budget process for the next school year, and I thoroughly enjoyed the process. We have two more meetings, one in February and one more in April, and those are set up to coincide with the rollout of the proposed budget on February 1st, as well as the recommended budget, which is due on April 1st. So again, I thank all of the members of the committee. Ms. Marotti is the new board representative on the committee. Appreciate her input and participation there, as well as all members of the committee. I will put in a little plug. There's been some good public testimony about communication and community involvement, and I would extend yet another invitation to parents and community members to participate in these meetings, and we'll continue to try to find other avenues toward we can get the word out, to publicize this committee and its efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Are there questions? Ms. Marotti?
I just wanted to thank Mr. McGraw and the Budget Committee for working so hard and putting such an integral part of the school district together in such a concise and nice way. I also want to comment that at the very end of the Budget Committee membership listing, it says specifically, there are three parent representative vacancies and two community representatives vacancies on this committee. And someone testified earlier that they want to know time commitments. The, Mr. McGraw mentioned that there is a meeting in February and one meeting in April. So just sitting it out there, please, if you want to have your voice heard at the committee level, there is plenty of room for you on this committee. And I think we said earlier that the contact information for the committee is listed on our website, so feel free to go there and check that out.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you for the overview there. I do have just a couple of questions. Do you know the sense of the committee when they were talking about the systematized approach to technology integration? If they're really talking about the approach, how that teachers all use it the same way? Is that the systematization? Is it the balance of machines available at a school, or what's the sense there of that system?
I'll preface my response, Mr. Dorn, with, I'm not an educator, but I hope I don't misrepresent the feelings of the committee members, but yes, it was, the various different factors included things like leadership within the building, just different perspectives on the delivery of education, resources, expertise levels of staff members within the building, and so, yes, it was systematizing, coming up with a consistent approach on integrating those resources within the curriculum and the teaching methods within the building.
And recognition that technology is one of the flexible tools, along with the flexible content, and there are many ways of personalizing it that may vary how that's used and approached.
Correct, yeah, absolutely. And I think if you were to, if I were to say in general, broad terms, it was maximizing the investment that the district's making in rolling that technology out in a number of different ways, as you're saying, that not all methods are going to look the same, but making sure that in different staff members' ways and different buildings' ways, maximizing that investment in students and in technology.
And one other on the tech. In the conversation, Ms. Marotti, you might also have a memory on, did it come up at all any of the concerns that parents addressed this evening, too much screen time, not enough screen time, or?
That topic was not broached in our committee meetings.
Okay.
Ms. Marotti?
But a reason for that might be the lack of parent representatives on the committee. That is a couple of the vacancies, so that would be nice to have those seats filled so that we could get more of that perspective from them.
Mr. Dorn?
And maybe to the administration, something to keep in mind, I know I've been impressed as I've gone around to the schools and talking with teachers, many of them are using some new technology programs, et cetera, like this, but one of the nice things that I've, professional things I've heard is they're also looking to see which ones are working, which ones are effective, which ones are not, and that might be a piece in the big picture of looking for that feedback and how that works. The other question I had was in terms of the staffing allocation model, what that was referencing? referencing? Is that referencing PTR? Is it referencing total staff in a building?
Yes, from what I understood, it was taking the PTR concept and applying that to other positions within different sites and buildings in the district.
Okay. And was there any conversation about differentiation within communities, you know, sometimes, and we've given some latitude on staffing this year for a building to kind of say, okay, this is what you have, and do you need it in this position or that position? Were they still looking to provide that differentiation, that personalization of buildings?
Absolutely. I think the input or the feedback is centered around ensuring that some systematic method of the resource allocation is set, but then, yes, maintaining that flexibility within the different sites and buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Anderson.
Yes, I'd like more information on the staff allotment, this model. Where is this model coming from? What's the strategy behind the modeling, the allotment?
To my understanding, this is a new concept that we have not yet built to this point, and so, in a sense, it's a suggestion to expand the PTR that is applied to classroom teachers to other positions.
Are we not using this with custodial staff at this time in our district?
As far as I understand it, Mr. Norm can correct me, but custodians are allocated on a per-square-footage basis? So, the same concept is in play, but just instead of student numbers, looking at square-footage numbers.
Mr. Dorn.
And then, just looking ahead, you were talking about the February meetings. Am I correct, we'll see the proposed budget at our first, it would be February 5th, I guess, at our first?
Correct. I was just looking at the calendar. I think the first maybe is a Thursday or a Friday, so we'll post it. That actually will be perfect timing with posting, and then the next week is the board meeting, so.
Right. Okay, so we'll have a presentation on February 5th, the proposed budget, and that'll be with the full number, the numbers, summaries, and things of that sort, as opposed to just process.
It'll be the proposed budget.
Okay, all right.
An exact same presentation we had last year for proposed budget, yeah.
Then I guess my other question, in terms of the planning of the Budget Committee, in terms of meeting in February, I'm really glad to hear that. I know last year that seemed to get pushed and stuff. Is it planned at this point? Do you have a date? Is it going to be, how close to the beginning, I guess, so that they see the proposed budget, and also if they have any feedback regarding?
We do have that meeting calendared. Give me, I'll give you the date here in a few seconds. February 27th.
Okay, so it's a month late. Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question about how are you trying to contact the committee members that you don't have on your committee? Do you know what that process has been?
Yeah, of course, the website and that sometimes is a little difficult to find. We did put it out on Facebook for a time as well. We did not, one suggestion that we received after we had put it out on Facebook was, and I'm, forgive me, I'm not a Facebook utilizer, I'm one of the minority, but somebody suggested we elevate, do some kind of elevation in Facebook to try to get the word out more than the original rollout on Facebook.
And had you sent it out to the PTAs so that they would have it?
No, I'm not sure. I'll make a note of that, and we'll certainly do that for our future meetings.
Okay. Mr. Dorn.
To the administration, what has been the response, if we know, to the budget survey? I know that's been out for a while.
So, it's been about a thousand responses.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the budget? Seeing none, and this is the information in reports, so we don't have to vote on this, right? Oh, I'm sorry, public testimony on this report. Seeing none, back to the board for any comments or any additional information. Seeing none. Okay, we move on to the next report. CTE Comprehensive Plan Report. Goal and objectives. Personalized learning. Provide all students with options to meet their needs and achieve academic success. Sean Kraska, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. Dan Donkey, Director of Career and Technical Education. And Robin Taylor, Hutchison High School Principal, will provide an overview of the Career Technical Education Comprehensive Plan Report. Ladies and gents, you have, oh, Dr. Gabor, first.
No, thank you very much. I always concede most of the time to them. I just wanted to say, like last night, this is the end of a huge review, comprehensive review. Last night, we talked about discipline. Tonight, it's career technical education. You received a couple of updates from Mr. Donkey regarding the district-wide information, and we wanted to spend focused time, which we did this semester, we started last spring, on Hutchison High School as our career technical education high school. So again, huge thanks to ON Strategy for facilitating this big project for us and engaging a really broad number of stakeholders. You have the memo for me, and I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but one thing, it's like paragraph, essentially, what, one, two, three, four. With regard to the Hutchison High School strategic plan, my direction to that team, and I met with them as they got started, was to accomplish the following: to increase the diversity of the Hutchison student population and accessibility of Hutchison by all high school students, maximize use of the Hutchison facility, and maximize use of the Hutchison staff. And after that first meeting, they had many more interactions, and I feel like what Ms. Taylor will present to you today really gets at those goals, and I appreciate the work that that staff and Ms. Taylor did. Those are critical goals to me, and I think they're, as expressed by members of the board over numerous years, critical goals to the board. And the next paragraph, I just want to note, one important piece of this is that, starting this year, we will be implementing an online lottery process to ensure transparency and also equitable access for students district-wide, so they get equitable access to Hutch. And they'll be using a very similar, if not almost exact, but very similar, online system that we started with Barnett last year. So, I just wanted to put that out there, something specific, and with that, I'll turn it over to these guys, so thank you.
So, good evening, members of the board, and congratulations, President Dominique, and to the new members, welcome. Also, Dr. Gaboric, and of course, a shout-out to Sharon Tuttle, and also, and also, I got to mention Joni and Julie, CTE department. As you've heard tonight, there's a current global, national, local shortage of skilled workers. That's everything from sped teachers to classroom aides to airline pilots to doctors. Therefore, CTE continues to grow in importance across the U.S. and the world. A couple real quick highlights here. This year, in one of the few bipartisan pieces of federal legislation that was passed, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, which colloquially will be known as Perkins Five, but it's really a tremendous update in current technical education guidance and funding from the federal government. A couple quick highlights. Again, our approach to CTEC has been a little bit different this year, and we've really tried to engage business and industry at a much deeper level. And I had the pleasure yesterday of meeting with Mr. Rice at Servings Public Works, and we spent almost three hours going through, you know, that fairly critical local entity and looking at their workforce needs and their hiring challenges in some very high-wage, high-scale, high-demand occupations. So I appreciate your time yesterday, sir. And if we look at, our goal has always been to create more CTE opportunities for students district-wide, and some of our successes in the past year have included, last year, our Intro to Trades in School to Apprenticeship program, which continues to grow, we added the Labor 302. This year, it looks like, correction, Operator 302. This year, it looks like we're going to add the Labor in as well, and so that'll give us six unions total. But in a very exciting development, for the first time this year, we're going to offer an Intro to Trades class through a university program, and that will be the university's Community and Technical College Process Technology Program. That's a very high-wage, high-demand, high-scale occupation in Alaska. We've had workforce requests from a broad spectrum of Fairbanks businesses, including a cosmetology business, which is looking to establish the federally-registered apprenticeship with young adults, and we're continuing to research that opportunity. Lethrop High School is now up to three construction trades classes. And in a very exciting note, in conjunction with FNA, FNA received a $1.3 million federal grant recently, and its complete focus is to take Alaska Native and American Indian students from our school district and prep them and align them and guide them into completing healthcare courses through the Community and Technical College, specifically in the eight areas of allied health. And so this year, we, meaning FNA, is bringing a person onboard specifically for that job, and we'll keep the board updated as we move forward on that. With that, the Hutchison piece, our comprehensive needs assessment was very powerful last year, over 2,000 responses, very in-depth business and industry research. And the final piece of that has been the Hutch, the Hutch Plan, and with that, I will pass the mic to Principal Taylor. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity to meet with you guys and welcome new board members. I hope you're enjoying your experience. You know, when we started this process a good year and a half ago, I definitely had anxieties because I'd look at all the successes we were already having at Hutch. You know, we'd been identified as a number-one school in Alaska through U.S. News and World Report. That particular year, our science SBA test scores were top in the state, and so definitely walked into it with some anxieties, thinking, why do we have to change because we're doing stuff so well? But it definitely took a mindset shift for me to go, we're not changing because we're doing things poorly. We need to take a look at what we're doing, what we're doing well, and how we can improve on that for our students and for meeting industry needs. So, it was, for me, a transformational mind shift, and the process has been excellent as we've worked with ON Strategy, and then definitely starting with those surveys that went out and just the massive amounts of responses. And I understand Hutchison led the district in student responses, as Alden smiles over there. So, what I'm going to share with you and what you had in your board packet was an executive summary, and it's basically your Cliff Notes version of a lot of behind-the-scenes work that is happening. So, we're going to start with basically three major goals, so this is like a 10,000-foot view, and then we'll take it down to a 2,000-foot view that really is highlighting the objectives that we've identified in this five-year plan to meet those goals. So before diving into that, I think it's important, especially for new board members, to hear the actual mission statement that was developed for Hutchison High School when it came into existence, and that is, James T. Hutchison High School is an integrated learning environment within a culturally diverse community where academic and career technical experiences facilitate success in continued education, skilled employment, civic responsibility, and personal integrity. So through that, and throughout the work, we really tried to decipher, what does success at Hutchison High School look like throughout the next five years? And, you know, it's a continuation, we're going to continue to evolve as a career and technical education high school. We want to continue to expand CTE opportunities to serve more students in meeting with business and industry demands and needs, as well as student wants and needs. We hope that every student graduates with a plan, sense of direction, a certificate, credential, that students have opportunities to work in apprenticeships, internships, or work experience, strengthening our partnerships with business and industry, mirroring the diversity of the district while meeting the needs of individual students, again, ensuring full utilization of our facilities and staff, more integration with the university to expand opportunities, and ultimately to be a flagship for innovation in the area of career and technical education. So on that 10,000-foot view, with equity and access, our big goal is to expand CTE opportunities at Hutchison High School for students across the district. We want to make it equally accessible to all students, and again, attain that enrollment that reflects the demographics makeup of the district. In the area of student success, we want to continue to evolve and provide all students with options to meet their CTE needs and achieve academic success. In the area of operational excellence, we want to ensure that the infrastructure and resources are in place to sustain a successful CTE school. So that's that 10,000-foot view. Then diving down into the weeds, or that 2,000-foot view, you know, again, attain a demographically diverse student enrollment, and part of our hope and plan to maintain that diversity and be very transparent is through the lottery process. And this is a five-year goal, so not all these things are going to happen like when you walk in the door. But we want to look at a more flexible scheduling option with the bell schedules that can better accommodate full-time and part-time students at Hutchison. And we'd like to look at how we could extend access to the Hutchison facilities beyond the traditional school day. We do want to continue to maintain the integrity and culture of Hutch as a career and technical education school, while recognizing the value and role that extracurricular activities play in student success, as we also want to be very strategic in terms of how we dedicate fiscal resources to clubs and activities, specifically with our CTSOs, our career and technical student organizations. Again, and a lot of this is very much in line with the district's CTE plan, so you will have read and heard these things several times, but we want to make sure that we're offering programs and career clusters that are aligned with student, community, business, and industry needs, and we really want to ensure that all students are gaining and offered the opportunities necessary through a comprehensive education to graduate both career and college-ready, so whatever that next step is that they choose, they are prepared for that. Additionally, we want to ensure that we are supporting and teaching students integration of the professional and soft skills, so again, that they are college and career-ready. Then finally, in the operational excellence, we're really working to ensure that we are fully utilizing our facilities at Hutchison. Right now, that is a shared facility with the University of Alaska Fairbanks. We get the middle, and they get two ends in the upstairs, and there's some spaces that we get during the day and they get during the evening, but there are also some spaces that we think we could, you know, through some creative planning, enhance opportunities on. With hiring of staff, we'll continue to work to hire staff who are focused on integrating academic and CTE opportunities in the classroom, and then, as Mr. Donkey has alluded to, continue to expand on those strong industry partnerships that are in place and build more. So with that in mind, there are two actions that are occurring that are happening right now that we're very proud of. Dr. Gaboric has spoken to the lottery, so I've been working with the district downtown as to how that process is going to look, but during my, this is my fourth year as the principal at Hutch, the first year I was there, we received about 130 applications, and when it was all said and done, I would estimate that maybe 15 to 20 students did not get into Hutch just through capacity. This last year, we had over 250 applications, so it truly was one out of every two students were accepted into Hutch. And so just trying to make sure that we are transparent and offering the opportunity for all students who would like to have a chance of getting in touch, to be able to get in. The second immediate action that we've been working on all year, and it is certainly an iterative process because we've actually been focusing on this for two years, is a work readiness score. And what we have found through multiple conferences I've attended, through talking with local business and industry, is employers are speaking to the value of having work and career-ready skills, and as having been a small-business employer, I could tell people all the time, you know, I'll hire people who are willing and ready to work and have those soft skills. I'll hire people who are willing and ready to work and have those soft skills. I can teach them the technical skills they need. We hear that still as a number one need. So through our leadership team at Hutch and the staff as a whole, we've researched models and curriculum across the nation to come to, again, an iterative process that we're in version 2.0 now, but our workplace readiness score. And so what is, the big idea behind this is that our goal is to provide students with a work readiness score that they, when they leave Hutch, or as they are enrolled at Hutch, they're able to provide employers to say, here is my work readiness score. It's on a one-to-five scale, five being, this is a top-notch individual to hire. What we are doing is we are looking at the areas of attendance, tardies, on-time completion of work, soft skills, behavior, or not behavior, but soft skills that have two, I'm just looking for my, there's my notes, soft skill scores where we have two specific standards. A student participates cooperatively and respectfully in groups and collaborative tasks, and student completes tasks on time with accuracy. So again, this is a very iterative process, two years in the making, but we did our first trial run for the first quarter with all the teachers entering their soft skills, soft skills scores into a Google Doc, and then working with students in SSP through our rubrics to say, okay, based on your attendance, your tardies, these soft skills scores, here's your work readiness score as it sits right now. And then we've been going through the feedback that the teachers have gained from working with the students in SSP to determine, is our rubric scoring where it needs to be? And so that's actually part of our staff meeting tomorrow, is to revisit the feedback that we received from the students and the staff. So that's the excitement that we have at Hutch. A lot of great things happening, and I think it's an exciting time to see where we can head in the next five years on this. I think I took more than my time. That's okay.
We're trying to be respectful of report time, so I would just like to conclude before we're totally open to questions from the board. I want to commend both the work at the district level for Mr. Domke and the CTE staff for embarking on this full comprehensive review for our career technical education programs and working with ON Strategy. It is a huge heavy lift, as Dr. Gaborik said, and the data that we are receiving out of that and the information was phenomenal. In that same vein, just tremendous respect for the Hutchinson High School staff, led by Principal Taylor, who from the very beginning have recognized that they are a tremendous school doing fantastic things and want to continue that forward momentum. And just for point of information, we do have a significant population, due to the work over the last four years with Principal Taylor, of part-time students already gaining some access, and that grows every year. And so we want to build on that. And as Robyn mentioned in her notes, expand access, look at different ways possible to allow students, even in a part-time capacity, to access some of the great programs that are happening in that building.
Okay. I'm going to go this way this time first, okay? Mr. Rice and Ms. Moradi. Did you, yeah? Okay. Mr. Dorn, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Alden. Y'all remember your places, okay? This is a test. Okay, Mr. Rice.
Well, it's not really a question, you know, it's just us, you know, opening up that communication line between Don Domke and, you know, the city of Fairbanks Public Works. It just really amazed me, you know, whenever we were walking through, I'm like, wow, we do a lot of stuff here. You know, but like Mr. Jacobson said, you know, is that we want to be able to keep those communications open, you know, because we do a wide range of stuff that we have at the city of Fairbanks. You know, we have eight buildings that we have to fully maintain, and we do that with carpenters, we do that with plumbers and pipe fitters and maintenance personnel. We have over 350 road miles that we take care of, you know, whether we're grading them, paving them, or other issues. We have over 27 miles of sidewalk that we have to take care of. And not to mention, you know, the garbage that we collect Monday through Wednesday, you know, we go through, you know, quite a bit, you know, and, you know, it takes, you know, a lot of skilled people to come out. And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, being on the board since 2008 and, you know, starting to see where, you know, this career technical education is really going, you know, it's really, really positive. You know, Dan was out there, and, you know, we were talking to some of the employees that are out there, and, you know, he knew some from when he taught over at Hutch and when he was a principal over there. And then some of the students that came out of CE and, you know, it's just amazing, you know, how much, you know, you never realize, you know, how many people, you know, that we affect, especially getting out into the workforce, you know, whenever they leave our district, you know, I'm sitting there going, oh, wow, you know, we really, you know, help these people out, get in a career and, you know, making a difference in the city itself. So thank you, guys, for all you guys' work.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Ms. Moradi.
This stuff is so cool. The CTE program, I just, it blows my mind. I might be a little biased, my daughter is part-time at Hutch. So I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the 130, last year's 130 applicants, 15.
My first year.
The first year.
Last year was 250.
Gotcha, gotcha. The issue, though, so students aren't getting in due to capacity. So if we are talking about growing the Hutch population and the programs, what are some of the ideas to be able to build the capacity to meet that growth?
I'll start. You know, two things, in my professional opinion, really drive student instructional capacity at Hutch. Number one is obviously the facilities. And when we talk about Hutch, we talk about a lot of the legacy trades, you know, where there's traditional industrial-type shops. And the second piece is the CTE staff. And that would be, if you look at student enrollment, if you're talking to traditional high school education and CTE, sometimes when we separate those two, you see opportunities to grow strictly career and technical education instruction, as opposed to, you know, attempting to grow the entire high school experience. So some of those options would be, I mean, some right off the top are increasing part-time enrollment, which I will say Principal Taylor has done a magnificent job of that over the past, especially three years. And then also maybe a realignment of some of the offerings and programs that we have at Hutch that can now actually be offered in different facilities, in different buildings.
Are you talking about some of the programs that are offered at Hutch being offered at other high schools?
Certainly, you know, it used to be several programs were the only programs offered in the district were offered at Hutch. Say, Arts AV is an example. And as those programs have grown at other buildings, health care is another great example. You know, we have some, we have some well-known students in our town that, you know, at the time, Hutch was the only game in town, but now health care has exploded. And our instruction in health care has increased across the district. And we have strong health care programs in every one of our high schools now. But if you get to, say, the automotive, you know, transportation, we're limited to, you know, two shops. And, you know, North Pole High School, I should probably mention, does a fantastic job of, you know, traditional, if you will, career and technical education as well, along with some of the other programs. But other schools are limited, you know, by facility, so.
I have one other question. You mentioned the work readiness score, which is great. But you also said that the students will work with their teachers on that score or talk about it during SSP. So for part-time students, how, are they getting to benefit from this, or are they kind of excluded until that gets figured out?
So right now, we're starting with just the full-time students. We actually presented to our principal admin group today the pilot work of where we're at right now, and they got to see the integration from the Power School data to get part of the work readiness score. And we were talking with them about creating a spot in the gradebook where the teachers would enter the scores for the two standards on the soft skills. They were so excited and receptive, I think, I don't know if they were jumping around as much as I was last week when Kevin showed me what he was able to put in for us. But I'm hopeful that this could expand across the district. Again, we're two years in the making and continuing to revise to get it to where we think it's going to be a polished product, to be able to say, here's my work readiness score. But it's exciting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dorn.
So I'll do a couple to start. And really appreciated all the work that's in here. And, you know, as you mentioned, it's the summary, not reflective of all the stuff that's gone behind it, and I love going to Hutch. But I'm going to start with Hutch, I'll come back to CTE later on in another. But one of the major changes is the lottery application. And I'm assuming that this is kind of a work in progress in part, and if not, but my concerns or my questions are, you now currently have an application process, would it be a similar application? Will they be indicating some interest? I mean, Hutch has been developed with a specific focus in mind, if you will, and not just being something that, well, I want to go to a smaller school than another, you know, one of the other high schools, or such like that. But taking advantage of the offerings that are there and the hard work that's gone in to put that together in terms of students' needs and interests. I am aware from day one, when it opened, there were questions about, well, who is getting in, who wasn't? And so, and I think over the years, I've seen it get better and better in lots of ways over that more open process with that. But I am concerned in terms of what its purpose is, and as opposed to, well, just, I want to go to that side of town, or a small school, or, you know, I like the Hutch team, or whatever, you know. So could you talk a little bit about that, how that application piece and how that plays with lottery?
I'll start, and then I'll let Sean, because she's been working closely with Jeanette. So actually, the feedback over the years has been exactly the opposite. The feedback has been that parents, that parents want to get into Hutch because it's a small school and the CTE is an afterthought. And they actually ask around and try to find out, or they'll put something, some CTE program on the application, they find out that's full, well, I don't care, then put me in something else. Right? So we're trying to address that issue, also make sure, again, that there's real transparency around the process. There's, so Robyn spends her whole spring break at this point going through paper applications, which is not acceptable. Like, so, you know, also automate the process. But there's definitely, and I'll let Sean, they've been working very, just, I guess it's not similar to Barnett this way, but working on identifying kids who have a true CTE interest, like they do right now with the application, and then creating, you know, their space available is based on spaces in those career technical education programs. So, and Sean can speak more to that, because she's doing the hard work with Jeanette.
Yes, so actually, Robyn and I both have, and as a guide, just for information, we're using our lottery framework that we have for the lottery system we have in place, for example, for Barnett. But because Hutchinson High School is different, and because from its inception, Hutchinson is a high school for students and families who are passionate about or have a specific interest in a particular career pathway. So with the work we're doing with information systems is not just go on and put your name in the hat and you might get drawn, but you're going to have to identify, you get two choices, you're going to have to narrow the choices to two of the career pathways that are offered based on space availability. And between now and when that window opens, that information will be coming out to families. But, and so as the lottery process rolls, again, this is new for Hutchinson and new for us for at a high school, so we're all working together. But you'll identify your top two choices, and then the lottery will run based, and as it's going through, it will fill based on those top two choices. And so hypothetically, I'll just say, if the health care pathway fills up, then it's full. If you, if your first choice was health care and your second choice was IT, and there's a space in IT, you would be placed then in the IT pathway. And that's, and then you would be in. If the lottery runs and your name comes up and both of your first and second choices are full, then there wouldn't be a seat for you in that, and you wouldn't be selected. So through the online lottery process, families will have to identify one or two choices, and then it will fill based on grade level, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, how many seats are open there. Hutchinson High School has the capacity for 400 students. And so it, so those vacant seats now, if you will, that enrollment will be done completely through the lottery. I was going to say, it's completely done right now, we're about 95% there. We have another meeting coming up next week, I think that'll polish it up completely, and then we're going to be canvassing our community, every area of our community, at all schools, all middle schools. This is how it works, these are the lottery dates, getting that information out there to students and families. I'm sorry, Mr. Dorn, I think I kept talking.
No, that's fine, because, just to follow up on this point, so there will be an application in which they're indicating a specific interest in CTE.
It's actually part of the online process, it's not a paper application.
Right, I know it's not paper, and I think, you know, doing it online is, is fine.
Yes.
As long as everybody has access to the online mechanism. And, but if I'm not interested in, the CTE is secondary, but I'm interested in having my kid considered there, would a parent still be able to put in, but would be a lower priority or would not put in at all?
The way we have it set up is that you have to enter information into each of the fields. And one of the fields is, please select one or two career pathway areas. And so it's not an option in this lottery process to say, I'm not interested in CTE, I just want to go to this school. So that's not part of it. That's not how we design the lottery. We, with purpose and intention, want to provide the opportunity to students all across the district who truly have an interest in being there for this purpose.
And related to it, the interest in equity and access and diversity particularly, what I'm concerned about, and again, you may be in the process of working this, and I understand that, is lottery, we've watched lotteries in a lot of our schools in our community, and they're not getting the diversity. So the lottery doesn't increase diversity, but there are processes in which, maybe even prioritization, or how are we going to help make, help encourage an application, a diverse pool of applicants? That makes sense?
It does make sense. I see Dr. Gaborik leaning, and I'll have her answer.
I think the outreach is going to be huge now, and they've, Hutch has always done a great job of visiting every single high school and getting kids into the school. I think the key then is going to be back at the middle schools, and not just at the middle schools, but to the high schools, because there's upper-class spots available, helping, making sure that parents can apply. So we consulted with legal counsel, you really have to be careful with some of those diversity pieces in terms of weighted lotteries and things, even with a magnet school. So the key will be in the outreach, yeah, and making sure that, and it's been the same focus with Barnett, you know, making sure that people have the opportunity, know that the application is online, be sure they have access to it. And they created really great tutorials last year. We actually did visits to schools and parent groups last year with Barnett, so people could see it and knew how it worked. And if I know, Robyn's will be doing the same thing, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you for your presentation.
Mike Donovan.
Thank you for your presentation. And one of my questions had to do around transportation. Our students buzz. Are students buzzed there? I mean, I know there's a lot of independent kids driving in.
Yeah, currently there is a shuttle schedule that goes between West Valley and Lathrop and Hutchinson between every class period, so that helps address part-time students. For full-time students, they ride the bus that would get them to their normal home school and so for Fairbanks students, that's either West Valley or Lathrop and then there is a shuttle bus that brings them over to Hutch. And I believe this year we have two, two or three buses coming in from North Pole. I believe we have two buses that come in from North Pole, so their transportation is available.
Okay, my second question is your, the work.
Work readiness?
Is it, is the work key score, like in math, the readiness score that they have to have for construction jobs of six, I think, is that part of this readiness score?
No, this is just really a professionalism, soft skills score that, that we, as we've talked with employers locally, they're very excited about it once they, you know, once we get an actual final project, product, but our hope is that students, especially with those good scores, will be very active in saying, look, I am work-ready based on Hutch's standards and as we've talked with business and industry in town, they're wanting to see it so that they can start to ask for it from Hutch students to see the value of their work readiness or professionalism.
And then you talked about staff during the time of classes, does that mean that it might go over into evening sessions?
You know, everything I think is dependent on fiscal resources, so that's why it's in the five-year plan, but we want to definitely, sorry, we want to definitely explore all options. We, we can see how, especially with the number of part-time students who are interested, maybe some other opportunities outside of our current bell schedule might be more conducive to, to help support students, so we're exploring, but we don't have anything in place.
And although we're taking the message through to middle and high school, I think part of the presentation that we had tonight from other people who spoke to us was the community piece, are there any scheduled meetings, like tribal halls, churches, or some other kind of presentation that other interested people could attend?
I don't have anything considered at this point.
So again, we haven't, that I'm aware of, haven't done those, but I don't know why we couldn't make that part of the, because we certainly moved in that direction with the charter schools, right, really trying to do some community outreach. So we could share some of those strategies and locations and places we know that work well with Robyn, so, yeah.
And finally, I'm glad to see you extend cosmetology and you're aware of the RIN program, which is the Alaska Native Nurses Program that Rebecca Dreyer, who's one of our own, who's in reach now, I've sent a couple of students through to that program and that's a fully, pretty much paid program for any Alaska Native or American Indian students, it's, it's an awesome program. Actually have a couple of my students from North Poli who's in that program, so that's great to see the expansion to include it. Thank you.
Mr. Alden.
So, whoa, excuse me. Well, first off, I'm a Hutchinson High School student and I'm in the Arts AV Cluster at Hutchinson High School and I love Hutchinson High School so dearly and I even got a bow tie with the Hutch logo put all over it because I love its home.
I have that picture.
Yeah, and so, but, you know, some of these ideas, like Ms. Taylor was talking about, you know, we do have things that are going really well, some of them raise concerns. And so starting off with the workplace readiness score, when that was first presented, the student feedback that I heard immediately was, why are they doing this and why do I feel attacked? And that is certainly not the atmosphere that we want students to feel, so I just think that making sure that we, great ideas are only great ideas if stakeholders believe in them. And so making sure that when we're presenting these new ideas to students, we're transparent about them and that students understand why they're being implemented and that it doesn't feel like it's teachers against students, it feels like it's teachers with students, because that's what the workplace readiness score is all about, is teachers and staff members working with students to make sure that they're better, ready for employment. And so some of the criticisms were, well, I already have a job and so, and that's another one that we have to take into account is where does that play a role in whether or not you're ready for being in the workplaces? Are you already in the workplace? And I know that Hutchinson High School has a lot of students that work during the school year and the summer and so being able to make sure that we take all of that into account. And then one thing, the other main point that I wanted to say is that when I was in eighth grade, I thought I wanted to be an engineer and so I was thinking IT route, maybe take some of the engineering and, or take some of the architecture and construction classes, but then through high school, my ideas changed and that is a common thread amongst many, many high school students, is that they're sort of, their ideals shift a little bit. And I'm still able to take advantage of Hutchinson High School being in the broadcast journalism class because I'm thinking I might go into something more like journalism, but making sure that we're not locking students into their eighth grade goals, because 13-year-old Alden Jerome doesn't, didn't have as much knowledge as 16-year-old Alden Jerome had and so making sure that we're still making it possible for students to make a switch in a career cluster if they see themselves going down a different path and making sure that Hutch is a, is a vehicle for that. So, and then my last little bit is just that, you know, we have to remember that Hutchinson High School is still a high school and so one-sixth of my day is career cluster classes for a lot of students, that's a third or a half of their day, but the other five, six, two-thirds, one-half of their day is being a high school student, so making sure that we don't lose some of the traditions, you know, I don't know if you get, any of the board members saw our homecoming videos, but we have these colossal floats built on shopping carts and so making sure that we don't lose any of that tradition in the changes that we're making. But overall, really excited about these changes, but just making sure that we're clear with students about the intentions of them and that it's not students versus teachers, it's students with teachers and that we don't lock students into their eighth grade goals.
Ms. Mori.
Couple more questions. So kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Jerome just mentioned about assuring that we don't lock students into their, their original career clusters if they want to change them. So if, so, correct me if I'm wrong in the process, so a student or parent and student apply online, they have to pick their two pathways or clusters and then they get into Hutchinson based on those clusters. So what happens then if they get in and they change their mind, they don't want to do that anymore, how does that affect them and the lottery system altogether?
So, and it's a great question. The, the reason why we have them pick that, that initial entry is for scheduling planning purposes, you know, I, if we had all students that wanted to be in the healthcare cluster and none in our other clusters, then that's like a job security issue. So, yeah, it's a staffing issue.
Job security first.
So what we do, generally a student's freshman year only, they're, the courses that they have to take only provide them an opportunity to take one elective course and so that is that cluster that they chose. As they start to get the PE out of the way, the Alaska history, the health, the availability for elective opportunities, which at Hutch's, the CTE courses, opens up, that's where students have the availability to start to switch as they do their course requests in the spring. My daughter is a prime example, Alden is a prime example. My daughter entered in Arts AV, took that for two years and determined that she wanted to dip her toes into the healthcare field. So now she's on, she's a senior and she's on her third full-year healthcare class, but yet she had another availability in a class, so she's actually taking an auto class as well. So she's taking full advantage of the CTE opportunities and, you know, really getting to dip her, dip her toes in, in different areas, so there's certainly opportunity.
That makes sense, thank you. And I just wanted to mention and maybe put a little competition in you guys' ear about, after the regular school bell schedule, offering classes, Lathrop offers an AP Arts History class at night on Monday nights, because there are students that are interested in it, but it doesn't have to affect their regular schedule, they can squeeze it in and, so I think that would definitely be a great opportunity, especially for part-time students that can't fit it, getting over to Hutch and, you know, maneuvering all that to have after, after-school bell schedule opportunities. I think that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, let me ask one, because we're on this roll with the eighth grade students, so I want to get mine in about that. I have a 13-year-old grandson, I'm trying to get him to look forward to getting into opportunities of this manner, but like Alden said, he's not focused in that field at all. So later on down the road, would he have an opportunity, if he decided, say for instance, he wanted to do auto mechanics, he could put himself in the lottery, let's say sophomore year, would two years be enough for him to be able to achieve that goal of auto mechanics? Or do you have to go for three years?
I would take one step back and say Perkins Five recognizes that, but we really are going to have a focus on career investigation and exploration at a much younger age nationwide that really needs to be implemented hard at the middle school level and even, even research shows at the elementary school level, really. The other thing is when you think about current technical education electives, as Principal Taylor mentioned, you know, a freshman actually has a pretty limited scope in their schedules for electives, by the time Alaska history and some of those other, you know, required electives. Really, the effectiveness of programs of study or career pathways magnifies as the student goes through high school. The student matures, they narrow down their choices and Perkins Five again recognizes that, but, and the new definition of a program of study under Perkins Five is actually going to be two sequential courses and while that might not sound like much, I'll use an example of a, of a, say a person who's a senior and they've kind of floated around a little bit, but if their senior year, they take Introduction to Healthcare and get their CNA license and move into the medical field, I mean, that's as big of a win, if you will, for that person in the current technical education world than it would be, you know, had they done that pathway at an earlier age. So I think it's, it's not so much really as time in the building, but it's, it's, what is the student, what program of study they focus on and what do they complete? Because again, I'll go back to Perkins Five, you know, it's about licensure, it's about certification, it's about employability out of a program that you can move into the next level, whether that's moving into Community Technical College, whether it's moving into the university system or whether it's moving into post-secondary training or even employment right out of high school.
Yep, thank you very much. Mr. Dorn.
And I'm going to give Ms. Teller a break and Mr. Dumke, you get my questions. So, two questions for you, one is looking at the plan, the five-year plan. A little surprised, and I just want to know, it's implied in there, going back to that expansion or the, not the expansion, but the extensions of CTE programs in other high schools, it's not very clearly expressed in the plan, it does kind of come under a little bit at that equity and access, that access goal, flexible delivery innovation, but there's been years of conversation by the district to say, okay, Hutch is going to have some very specialized programs, I mean, you can't have all that equipment in every single school, but as North Pole, you mentioned, has the auto shop, they do some of the ag, done some of the ag programs, things of that sort, but trying to extend further and further, is that a explicit intention of the five-year plan?
Indeed it is. I think if you go back historically, how current technical education electives often developed in the, in the school district as a whole, it was based on staffing and it was based on, on a schedule and, you know, administration would say, hey, we need some electives in our building, who on our staff can teach what as an elective? And so you would see things develop across our district at different schools that were standalone, they were really individual teacher-interest driven and as, and Hutchinson really, when it was introduced, you know, it's had a plan since 1974 about really specific career clusters, programs of study, and that's been a personal mission of mine and with a great support of the board and the superintendent as well, is to work on those programs of study district-wide and I think I'll use healthcare as a great example. You know, we have really strong healthcare programs in our district right now at every high school and part of the comprehensive plan and really the comprehensive needs assessment is, is there are programs that we offer in some of our schools that maybe don't align with much, they don't align with great workforce outcomes, there may be cool, interesting hobbies, but they've developed as CTE electives at our school and, and when we really look at facilities and we look at staffing and we look at the six or eight high-wage, high-skill, high-demand programs of study that were identified in the comprehensive needs assessment, that's where we're going to kind of shift back to, so that those are very well-defined linear programs with true business and industry or post-secondary outcomes.
Okay, so the plan, the intent of the plan is to have some site-based CTE programs in each of the high schools?
Definitely.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see that very clearly here and that's why I wanted to clarify.
And I may have been remiss because I didn't include my all-time favorite sheet that shows all of our high schools and the courses offered every year.
Yeah, well, we've seen, and it's pretty impressive and I.
And that kind of speaks to what we're talking about.
But I'm just thinking in terms of the plan.
Gotcha.
Okay, my other, my other question is, and I'll ask you just to give us a snapshot, okay, given time we've kept you here a lot. The personalized learning is an umbrella, it's a, it's a vision, there are no strategies such to it. When I'm looking at CTE, a lot of times, especially when we talk about credentials and things of that sort, there's a body of content and personalized learning has flexible content, it doesn't exclude a body of content. Could you just give us a quick snapshot of how personalized learning addresses the, the content of CTE and, and the delivery of it and again, a snapshot and a overview?
You know, I would say two things, number one is if you had told me I would be a high school principal when I was in high school, you know, that was a personalized learning journey. In other words, kids choose their own career and their own interest in occupation at a truly individual level, probably the single most individual level thing we do at high school. You know, even your coursework is limited, but your career choice is almost unlimited and the, a concrete example I would give you is Advanced Auto. I remember when I used to teach Advanced Auto and of course did it under, you know, NATF National Certification, is some students would have, you know, a year of small engines and they'd have a year of basic auto and they'd show up to Advanced Auto, just barely ready. Other kids might float in there as a senior, their dad owned a shop, they are, they are light years ahead, their learning needs of that content were completely different when they showed up in that same classroom that same day. And in a way, CTE is very quantitative in its, in its knowledge and so it's actually, CTE is kind of the original personalized learning.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any question? Ms. Anderson.
I have one final question. You said the university shares space with that facility and so thereon, are they contributors to financially for the space? Like do they pay for the space?
Yeah, they, they actually pay for the space, the, that is actually, you know, it's interesting if you look at, West Valley's on leased land and Hutchinson is on leased land and when Hutchinson was created, it was a 70/30 joint-use building, so 70% school district use, 30% university use. And the funding stream isn't just as simple as somebody pays rent to somebody, if you look at the agreement, it breaks it down by work orders, per quarter, maintenance, some of the building costs. I know, without diving too deep into the specifics, the, the school district is responsible for replacing joint-use equipment at, say, the welders in the welding shop, the university is responsible for other pieces. There had been, really when Hutch, the new Hutch from '04 was conceived, that was really looked at as a 10 through 14 school and the idea was that high school students could move succinctly. And the idea was that high school students could move succinctly and quickly into the two-year programs offered by the university. Hence you see, you know, an auto shop and a heavy equipment shop. And we still have great use, uh, I would say the Hutch welding shop is probably the most heavily-used facility in the district. You know, high school students start in there at 7:45 in the morning. And, and university students end there at 10:00 PM. And that, that often goes five days a week. Depending on the university usage, it, it used to be that building would fill up with over 100, sometimes even 200 university students at night, taking, you know, regular university courses. And I will say it's a, it's a shout-out to the district and the people that run this that that, that relationship has been really seamless for so many years.
Just one final question. Do you feel that there's adequate coverage for custodial staff to maintain all that traffic in that building?
That's probably a multiple paradigm answer, but I will say this. The custodians that we've had at Hutch have always worked very hard to do that. And you have some very committed teachers in the CTE world that, that do their part as well. You, you know, the automotive instructor and the automotive students, they play a great role in the upkeep and maintenance of the automotive shop. The same is true of the welding facility, the same is true of the other healthcare labs. You know, that, that is no doubt, however, a challenging heavy lift to take care of any school in our district.
Thank you.
Mr. Alden?
Just real quick and address to the custodial question. I must say that Hutch has, is a very clean facility in general. Not to throw West Valley under the bus, but I take a class at West Valley and Hutch is pretty clean. And we just have really talented custodial staff. And in addition to that, you know, when you look into any of the career cluster labs and the rooms that we have available at the end of the day and at the beginning of the day, they're all clean. And so that's not, um, and then that, that's just part of the, yeah, actually part of my grade in my class is whether or not we cleaned up well after our broadcast is over. So that gets taken care of pretty well.
Okay, now I'm going to ask just a few. I know we're sitting next to Mr. Dorn, he probably has a few more, but let me take care of mine now. I wanted to ask about the choices. We went into it a little bit and I was just wondering if a student selects two classes, and let's just say they take a healthcare class and they decide on taking automotives, just for an example. They don't get either of these. But is there a way for a student to take the healthcare class at another school? Because I think Lathrop offers some healthcare classes. Could that student transfer to Lathrop to take the healthcare class and possibly or hope to get back in next, the next time around?
So I hear a couple of embedded questions in there. My first question back to you is, are we assuming this is already a full-time student at Hutch or is this a part-time?
The student wants to be full-time at Hutch, but they got into this lottery, they're applying for the first time.
Okay, so certainly with students who want to be full-time students, but it just didn't work out based on enrollment numbers, what we always do is encourage them to, at their home school, work with their counselor, let them know what classes they're interested in. And we have some shared documents in the counseling department to be able to show what class periods we have those classes offered and how much space there might be for that particular class. And we do this back and forth. So we have students at Hutch who may want to take a class at West Valley offers that Hutch doesn't like JROTC. And so we work with their counselors and they go back and forth. So it's definitely been a blessing to have the shuttle service to allow students to go back and forth. And I did bring my numbers that I had shared at the board meeting last night, or last year when I talked about Hutch. So my first year there, we had, and when I say these numbers, think of it as a child sitting in a seat, but it doesn't necessarily mean the number of students, because some students will come over for more than one class. But my first year there, we had students coming to Hutchinson from other schools encompassing 167 seats throughout the sixth period day. Right now, that number has grown to 248 seats. And then on the reverse of our students, the Hutchinson students attending, mainly at West Valley, once in a while we get a student that goes to Lathrop for a need. My first year, we had 29 seats encompassed. So students, students leaving Hutchinson to go to primarily West Valley. Right now, that number is at 48. So it's a very good collaborative relationship among, um, the in-town schools, Lathrop, Hutchinson and West Valley, that if we have a student that has a need that can't be filled at one of our schools, we, um, mainly our counselors are working together to say, hey, you know, I've got a kid that needs this, but it doesn't fit with our schedule, do you guys have any space?
And that could be a student at the North Pole automotive class as well? Since you have a bus coming to Hutch, is it in the reverse for North Pole as well?
Well, the, the challenge is there is we don't have a shuttle bus that goes back and forth hourly the way out to North Pole, it's just the in-town schools. But, you know, in looking at the, the five-year vision here, one thing that we do want to do is, is look at how our bell schedule is structured to see if there's a way we can accommodate more to, to students that want to get into, to Hutch, whether it be full-time or for part-time classes. So, so that's in part of that five-year plan is how can we, um, maybe look at some flexible bell scheduling that supports Hutchinson students as well as non-Hutchinson students that come part-time.
And I really want to commend you, especially Ms. Taylor, for the part-time students that have enrolled and continue to go to your school. I hear from parents all the time how their child is able to go over. They were really frightened of them driving in the winter time, but it has really worked out for them. And thank you for that, because we had stopped that for a little while when, um, well, name names. But, um, it wasn't in progress as well. But Mr. Dumke, I think you started it back up again when you came on. And it needs to continue, because we can't build them everywhere around this town. We need more of them, more Hutches. And, um, it needs to happen sometime in the future. But I do have a proposal for Mr. Dumke. You can talk just about anybody into anything that there is to have. We do need another Hutch. And I really think as a whole, when we go to the legislature for the fly-in this year, we need to have you leading the way and talk to our legislators to fund another Hutch. And I'll give you till 2024, okay? Just get all your facts and figures together, because I know you can do it.
No pressure. That'll be on my evaluation now.
That's right, Karen, you heard me, right? So if it's not accomplished, you know what's happening, okay? I won't be on the board then, but I need you to accomplish it, okay? I'm out there to help you though, okay? All right. Are there any other questions, comments, anything? And I really think it's, it's a great school and I really would love to see my grandson go there. But if he's not interested, there's no sense in pushing him in that direction. But, um, kids like Ms. Marotti's daughter, I met her. And that young lady is a go-getter like your daughter is, they're trying everything. That's what high school is all about. These kids need to understand, take a stab at it, you never know, you might like it, you know? But thank you for all your hard work and I really appreciate your report. Thank you. Okay. The next one is superintendent report. Goals and objectives, effective communication, establish relevant, inclusive and consistent two-way communication to enable, encourage student, parent, staff and community correctedness with the district and increase the diversity of voices within the district. Superintendent Dr. Gabor will provide a superintendent report.
Thank you, uh, I apologize. I realized as I started talking earlier that I'm losing my voice, so we'll see how long we last. I, just a couple of comments on the public testimony. Did we forget public testimony on that item?
Oh. Did we have someone? Oh, let me go back, even though y'all have taken your seats. Anybody in the public for, public testimony for the CTE report?
Sorry, I only came out of my mouth.
I'm sorry, I didn't even think about that, sorry, thank you.
Yep, so I can tell that people are engaging with their surveys on the strategic plan and budget, so that's great news. It's funny, I don't know, I, I could have Ellis, we do have Ellis to build surveys and, you know, Ellis is the psychometrician. And we, uh, they're considered flawed, which is interesting. Just so folks know, I based the budget survey, which you guys will see when we pull out, um, the proposed budget on the survey that Anchorage did, citywide. You know, they had a huge stakeholder survey and almost, um, item for item. And we had been, we had been collecting input on similar, um, items, but I, I used theirs as a model. So just, uh, I, I'm not sure if I mentioned that to the board earlier. And then the strategic plan survey that people are engaging with, that's significant too. And I just want to remind people, I've said this 100 times, I'll keep saying it. The strategic plan is my marching orders from the board. And we accomplished a great deal of what is in that strategic plan, thus we need a new one and a new five-year plan. And so, um, again, very much looking forward to the strategic plan process and the new strategic plan and what goals and objectives this board will have. And those, again, unless the board tells me otherwise, will be my marching orders to accomplish. So, uh, and personalized learning, again, is not only a goal, but has a whole list of objectives under that. Again, uh, just a, um, a point of clarification that we've been making from the beginning. None of the money that was spent, quote unquote, on personalized learning, working with Ed Elements, none of that went to software. That is all professional development for teachers. Education Elements does ongoing, at least quarterly, maybe more. They get feedback from staff, almost on a quarterly basis. And principals get that information and they take it back to their staffs and, and review that with their staffs. And then principals really are tasked with then working with their school communities on, you know, personalized learning and how well it is or isn't working with their school communities. In fact, I believe principals are working very hard on that and doing that work. And, and again, personalized and personalized learning for their school community. So we certainly heard from University Park and we can, you know, help provide support in that area. So, um, let's see. The proposed budget, so interesting things going on Twitter right now. Information that was posted is suddenly not available anymore on the state website, so, uh, yeah. Let the politics begin. So the governor's proposed budget is due, um, Governor Walker came out with his budget, the transition budget. The, um, Governor Dunn Levy's proposed budget is due, his markup of that is due by December 15th. That's always kind of been our baseline. But he actually has time, I believe, until the beginning of session to continue to make amendments to that. So we, I base, um, our revenue picture from the state on the governor's official, um, December 15th budget. So we're hopeful that what Governor Walker put out there with the 30 million forward funding was intact in his budget, so we'll see. So then, and, um, I started meeting this week with all the program managers to start putting together the department budgets for this week. Where I also kicked in my meetings with, um, I have a principal budget focus group that I meet with very regularly throughout the budget season and I had, we met with them today, so. Let's see. And I think one important thing again around options, where Governor Dunn Levy has always been very clear his entire career, even as a superintendent, that options are for families are very important for him. So I think this conversation, and you talked about, you know, conversation around charter schools and magnet schools, I think that's going to amplify. I think we're also going to have to watch for conversations around vouchers. So lots more of that conversation coming, not less, is, is my, if, again, if he remains consistent. So he's been a very much a huge proponent of choice for families. Something very positive, uh, I was not familiar with this blog, it's called the Mott Foundation Blog. And in that blog, and I'll send you guys a link, because I just got it this week. Our after-school program, um, entire after-school, um, program district-wide was highlighted, but especially the east, um, program in the summer that they do. And so it's just a wonderful article on all the things that we're doing in the summer through the after-school programs specifically around STEM. And well, actually, they use STEAM. So I just wanted to send it to you guys, it's really a wonderful article and just a huge, um, just huge kudos to everybody who works in the after-school programs and, and does that work. And then another audit report, we love it when audit reports are good. So another great audit report. You know, there's always findings and there's always things to improve on, but it's a special education audit report, another great audit report. And not that we want to compare ourselves to other districts, which we won't do publicly, but we're doing a good job. So, thank you, Mr. Coriel, who's jumped in and filled in, in that executive director position. We, I'll post that, um, probably in mid-January and we'll fill that position permanently, so. Let's see, oh, and another note, um, starting at the very beginning of the strategic plans, Sue Hull and I, President Haas and I, um, have visited, just so you know, we've gone to PTA council meetings. Allison Lambert and I went this fall and spent Saturday with the PTA council. So we've been very engaged with them at least once a year. Sometimes in the past, PTA council has met with me separately as their E-Board, you know, and we've had meetings. So again, um, always talking about the strategic plan every single time and, uh, you know, walking through those things. So just so you know, that, that myself and school board members, often because school board members have been traditionally very involved in PTAs, like we've gone together to be part of, to engage with PTA council, so. On the building sub note, um, just a little history reminder, we had building subs without benefits. And so the IRS said can't do that. And so that often comes up and it'll just be a matter of priorities and fiscal availability. Karen, I call it Karen math, Karen's quick math on, and principals would absolutely agree, please give me somebody in a building that we could use as a building sub. It's about 3.2 to $4 million. And that's just one in every building. So, you know, it's a heavy lift, it'll just be a matter of priorities. So just something so the board knows that. And so we cut those back during times of cuts. Absolutely useful in schools and there's not a person in this room or in a school who would disagree with that. It's just a matter of priorities. We've even talked about, um, how do we, is it possible to get an ESA position that could kind of do all kinds of things in schools? The trick, you get a little, it gets a little dicey when you suggest that they work as a substitute teacher, because then they're, you know what I mean, they're doing teacher work and so. I don't know, we haven't come up with a great answer, other than exactly what she's suggested, which is a full-time teacher. And it was, it was a beautiful pipeline, um, you know, to our teaching ranks. Claire also let me know as well that she has been doing outreach. And HR is very aware of the substitute teacher program. They had 41 people attend their sub roundup. And also they gave out free vouchers for fingerprinting to help with that. So they had 27 people working on that. They're moving to a per diem pay model, so half-day, full-day. So people will get paid for the time, hopefully stay, and, you know, because it's very hard to get a sub for a part-time day. So HR is very aware of the problem and really hoping, um, doing what they can to, uh, address that issue as well. And I think that is everything that I have tonight. Just, um, uh, lots of, um, events, holiday events, um, going on in the schools in the next couple of weeks. So I've always encouraged principals to let share, know, to let you know. So if you want to go to a concert or, you know, just lots of wonderful, a lot of music, you know, happening this time of year. So if you want to go to any evening events and see our students perform in the fine arts, this time of year is a great time to do that, so that's it for me, thank you.
I need a motion for us to extend and I need to take a break. Anybody else agree? Y'all can continue. But I need to take a break.
Move, extend to 10:30?
Okay. Okay, y'all can continue?
Yes, second. And what do you want?
Next thing, is the hour, oh, break. Oh, yeah, yeah, five-minute break. We are back. Um, our next old business is the school board regular meeting at 7 o'clock, right?
No, 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 no business.
Oh. Okay, well, action items, new business. Resolution 2019-11 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Core value, respect, respected diversity and dignity of all. School Board Resolution 2019-11 honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And proclaims the week of January 20th, 2019, for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Activities throughout the borough and school district. Could I have someone from the board to read the resolution, please? Oh, sorry. Would you want? Motion? He can't make a motion.
Yes, make a motion to, uh, read the resolution, except, oh.
Yes, make a motion to read the resolution except, oh, where is it?
It says true.
Move to approve Revolution, Resolution 2019-1 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Second.
Now, could I have a board member read the resolution? Okay, Mr. Alden.
Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education Resolution 2019-11 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District envisions excellence and equality for all and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. also dreamed of an outstanding education for all children and whereas Dr. King believed education transmitted the accumulated knowledge of the human race as well as the accumulated experience of social living and whereas Dr. King dedicated his life to justice, equality and service for the greater good and whereas the principles, oratory and achievements of Dr. King are worthy of emulation and whereas the third Monday in January, a national holiday since 1983, has become known as the Day of Service by which to honor Dr. King's legacy and whereas a day of service empowers individuals, strengthens communities, bridges barriers, creates solutions to social problems and moves us closer to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, that, no, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by proclaiming the week of January 20th, 2019, as a time for teachers and students to conduct special studies of Dr. King's life and achievements and engage in service activities throughout the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District.
Thank you, Mr. Alden. Are there any testimony from the public first, right? I'm staring at you, Ms. Marotti. Okay, doesn't seem like there's any comments from the board. And you have to call the role in this one, okay.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to our next resolution, I mean, our next business, under new business. Resolution 2019-12, funding for roof replacement projects at Ben Aylston Jr. Senior High School and Wood River Elementary School. Our core value, safe environment, provide a safe learning environment. Resolution 2019-12 states the school board's intention to set aside an amount equal to $7,408,373 for the purpose of completing roof replacement projects at Ben Aylston Jr. Senior High School and Wood River Elementary School. The board's action through this resolution is contingent upon the Fairbanks North Star Borough Assembly passing an ordinance which sets a cap for fund balances at an acceptable level and removes all last programs for FY '19 and subsequent years. Now, we have a substitute, do we do that now, Sharon?
Well, after the motion.
After the motion, okay. So I need a motion for this resolution.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-12, funding for roof replacement projects at Ben Aylston Jr. Senior High School and Wood River Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, now I need, Mr. Doran.
I'd like to move to amend the main motion to accept the proposed substitute for Resolution 2019-12, funding for roof replacement projects at Ben Aylston Jr. Senior High School and Wood River Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, second. Now we speak to it?
Oh, you can ask for any objections, right? You have to accept it first.
See whether there's any objections.
Any objections to the substitute? Seeing none, I need someone to read it, right?
Well, you can just move it, move it, accept it.
Okay, so we'll move it. Move, substitution has been accepted by unanimous consent as the working document. If there is any objection, then we can call a roll call, but we accepted it. Okay? Now, where we go?
Now you work on that document.
Okay. Okay, we're going to start with any questions, comments, anything that's having to do with Resolution 2019-12. Nobody has anything? Mr. Doran?
Okay, I'd just like to comment on it, I'm supportive of this substitute and I think, again, it's reflective of a building collaborative and working relationship between the district and the borough. There's been a lot of work by both administrations to come up with this and come up with a constructive resolution to our situation in helping to deal with maintenance situations. So I just wanted to recognize that this is reflective of a community effort, really, at this.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Any public comment on this Resolution 2019-12? Seeing none, back to the board for any comments? Seeing none, Sharon, call for the board.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, got that one done, yes. Okay, next new business is Policy 578, Employee Rights and Interests, Transportation of Students' First Reading. Core value, safe environment, provide a safe learning environment. Policy 578 addresses district employees' rights and interests in providing transportation for students in their private vehicles. The current policy provides that district employees may not be required to provide transportation to students in district or non-district vehicles and it requires the superintendent's prior authorization before an employee may transport a student for school purposes. The proposed modification would forbid district employees working in their capacity as district employees from transporting any student unless they have prior authorization from the student's parent or legal guardian, as well as the employee supervisor. Additionally, the proposed revision requires district employees to understand when they are acting in the capacity of a district employee or private citizen. The administration recommends adopting the proposed revisions to Policy 578. Legal counsel has worked with the administration to develop the proposed revisions to Policy 578 and recommends adoption of the proposed modifications. Need a motion?
Move to approve first reading, public hearing and advancement to second reading of Policy 578, Employees' Rights and Interests, Transportation of Students.
Second.
Okay.
Dr. Gabor?
I can start, so thank you. These two policies have been a few years in the making and it's something, both transportation and then housing of students, is something that's a challenge when you're both an employee and a parent and a community member. And so, we've worked over time with coaches, with teachers, just all kinds of staff, anybody who interacts with kids, right? And finds themselves in a position where, you know, in this particular case, a student needs a ride, or, you know, how do we deal with some of those things? Where does my hat as an employee end? My hat as a parent begin? You know, there's a lot of gray area there. So anyway, one thing that became clear is that we needed guidance and we just didn't have any. And so, we've been working over, like I said, a number of years with both associations, legal counsel, with labor relations, with school principals and the two assistant superintendents to kind of work our way through this. And so, this is the culminating result of that and, and again, lots of people involved in this, but definitely technicalities in terms of liability. So, that's why we have legal counsel kind of giving us the final recommendation on this and then Clint is here for questions if you have it, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Doran?
Yeah, I have two questions. One is in the, and I know this has been basically practice and I believe in policy very similar to this for a number of years. But my question is in terms of prior authorization, on the first paragraph is by the employee's supervisor, on the second paragraph, it's prior authorization of a superintendent. Is the implication that the superintendent is, if the supervisor has the delegation to do that or are they, do we, does it need to come back to the superintendent, the employee, the employee supervisor has to come back to the superintendent to get that authorization and then they give it or?
And I'll let Clint respond to that and I'll jump in.
Think that's an administrative.
So I would just like a point of clarification on, Mr. Doran, the first paragraph, which is new language there, specifically addresses a district employee transporting a student in their private vehicle. The second paragraph there is not new language, it's our existing language for this policy.
Correct.
And it is addressing employees not transporting a student for school purposes. And so, there's a difference there. Transporting a student for school purposes, as the language reads, again, this is first reading, for school purposes would need the prior authorization of the superintendent. Transporting, an employee transporting a student in a private vehicle without prior authorization by the student's legal guardian employee needs to be communicating with their immediate supervisor.
So, in the first paragraph, that's transporting them under what circumstances? Is it for non-school purposes?
Yes.
Okay, then I don't think that's clear and I would suggest that maybe we need to look at that clarity, because I read it as an employee, you know, especially when we talk about homeless youth, I'm assuming, one instance of that is you might having, helping to transport a student home if they're sick, but they're to a homeless situation, you know, you might be in that transport and you're using your vehicle. I'm thinking as a principal, for instance, that's the only way we can get the child home or whatever. Or a parent who has a baby and can't leave the baby to come get their kid, you know, again, extenuating circumstances is not the norm, but parent approval, I can run the kid down, so they're home and you're, you know, those types of things. So, that's basically school purposes. I think we have two situations. If it's non-school purposes, that's a whole different thing than in school purposes. But I'd suggest maybe look at that clarity.
Cheryl, I, Mr. Doran, just with regard to the difference between paragraphs one and two, we'll certainly look at, you know, maybe try to make it clear, but the paragraph two addresses the officially sanctioned school events or school transportation. And number one, paragraph number one, is designed to address situations where an employee may be representing that they're a district employee in their interaction and that would lead to transportation. That would be something different than an officially sponsored event, whether it be after-school activity or field trip or something like that.
Okay, I don't, I think it leaves it with a lot of confusion.
Mr. Alden?
For clarity's sake, Mr. Doran, you want it to be better specified in the first paragraph, that that is in a non-school capacity outside of any activity or curricular activity, correct?
Well, if indeed, the first one is having nothing to do with school, then they shouldn't be representing themselves as a district employee.
Which is what the third paragraph is designed to address.
Okay, and I'll come back to the third one because I think that leaves a lack of clarity. But you're saying that the first paragraph is in non-school related situations.
So again, for not for official school purposes.
I think that...
Well, okay. So, we're saying official is a...
Again, you have, you have kids, this happens a lot of time in athletics.
Right.
You have kids on a trip, somebody needs, you know, transportation, you know, so my example always is, you know, maybe to the hospital, you know, you've got a sort of, right? And so, that's an official trip, an official event, you know, you're acting in the capacity as a district employee, perhaps as a coach or whatever. So, the first one is you're not, it's not a, it's not a defined, a clearly defined, predetermined, official, not in any official school capacity. So, the examples that you gave might actually be outside the line and that's where people start to get confused and worried about what they can and can't do. Perfect example, principal just called, last semester had a student that was never able to get home, asked if she could transport and we said no and we called a cab. And, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, yes, I'm the principal, I need to do something with this child, should I be transporting them home? We said no, let's arrange for other transportation. She could say, you know, as a, as a principal, I need to get this kid home, but we're saying, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Right, and then I have no problem with...
That's not your normal job as a principal, is to drive kids home, so let's figure something.
Right, right, and I'm saying, okay, I think there's a lack of clarity in terms of it and that those two, first two paragraphs are perhaps in contention with each other as to who is giving that prior authorization. If the understanding is that as a superintendent, you can delegate and so this is, I think it's more of a clarity and a procedural matter, even more than a legal matter, to look at that wording. But I don't think it's clear.
So, it would be helpful to, what would be helpful, specific?
Well, if you mean in the first paragraph, it's non-school, then I'd almost question why we need that there, because then they're not acting as a district employee, if it's non-school.
Maybe I can offer clarification just briefly. So, I want to circle back around to your original question, Mr. Doran. So, the board forbids any employee working in the capacity of a district employee to transfer students in their private vehicles without prior authorization by the student's legal guardian or employee supervisor. So I want to use the example you did because it's ringing through with me as I'm, so let's talk about the kiddo who is, this is the bus or whatever, and, and I'm the third grade teacher and it's 5 o'clock and I need to get this student home. If I, as the teacher, in collaboration with my building principal, had exhausted all of my possibilities, what this is saying, and if I understood your question right, is that if it's 20 below and we need to get the third grader home and mom can't come, I can engage with you as my building supervisor to drive in my private vehicle that kiddo home. We would not want that to happen. We would want the example that Dr. Gaborit gave, which is, can we send you in a cab? Can a relative come or some, we would want to be exhausting those possibilities.
Right.
What we don't want to have happen for liability reasons is just a district employee, put a kiddo in their car and drive away and mom doesn't know, dad doesn't know that the student is in the vehicle, you don't know as the supervisor. But I'm the teacher and in that capacity, I am a district employee. So I haven't, I haven't gone through the process to communicate with you as my building principal. Did I answer that right or differently or did I clarify it or?
No, no, you're exactly...
With you now?
In terms of, I am in full agreement that this should only be the exception, first of all, that if a teacher comes to me, no, I don't want to give that teacher permission, that's not their thing, we have to exhaust... We have to exhaust all extenuating circumstances or all options. And that actually, if anybody, I would take that responsibility.
Sure.
And, and because I, I think that we are, we're putting an employee in a liable situation.
Correct.
And so I don't have any problem with, with that. And we've had many conversations over the years with this. And sometimes it's been tighter and sometimes it's been less tight. And I believe leading towards the tighter is more important. So I'm, I'm supportive of it. It just that, I look at it in terms of basically, you don't transport a student in your private vehicle. There may be an exception.
So this, so this gets to the exception.
It's got to go to the employee.
So the exception is, if it, if it has to happen, this is how it happens. The student's legal guardian and the supervisor is notified. And that, so you, you don't just make that decision by yourself.
Right, and, and that it's, and I like the fact that legal guardian is in there. I think that's extremely important. I think that the employee supervisor is not just notified that you have here, that it's authorized by the supervisor.
Okay. Let's make this prior authorization by the student's legal guardian and the employer's supervisor.
Right, right, all right. But it's, it's not just notification. It's, it's actual active.
Correct.
Authorization. And then, but I, I just see then the employer's supervisor, employee's supervisor can authorize it. But then the next paragraph that says has to be authorized by the superintendent. So you're, the question is, you're saying it's different circumstances. I don't see that.
So we need to clarify maybe the second paragraph.
As you're, I think it's all the same circumstance. There's, I'm not going to authorize as a supervisor, I'm not going to authorize someone for a non-school purpose.
Mr. Alden, you want to talk into your mic?
Sorry, I, I was saying, for clarification, the second paragraph, an employee shall not be required by an administrator to drive students in either district or non-district vehicles. So that could be a private vehicle, as mentioned in the first paragraph, or a not, or a district vehicle. And so that, I think what, Mr. Dorn, you're saying clarification between the two paragraphs so that paragraph two doesn't seem red.
Paragraph one and the second sentence of paragraph two.
Okay.
Okay, now, why I'm hesitant to suggest a word amendment is I'm trying to get that clarification and I, I find, you know, because I, I looked at it as one. It's only, you're only going to authorize it if it's school-related. I don't see a difference in terms of official or non, although I know the circumstances of, especially when they're on trips. But you have the same considerations that are in there. So, so that's why I'm hesitant to suggest a specific wording, the lack of clarity. The, the last sentence, the third paragraph, it sounds good, except that what I'm concerned about is that responsibility is on the district employees that can catch them coming or going. And that actually, we have a responsibility as supervisors to help make that clear. You know, for instance, conversation with a teacher, I'm going to transport my next-door neighbor home because he missed the bus. I live next door, you know, so wait half hour and when I'm off duty, I can, I can, or no, that's not, you know, and then that becomes one of those real gray areas, you know, to work with people, what capacity they are.
The distinction there is, so that's a great example. Teacher lives, you know, neighbor, neighbor kid needs a ride. Teacher drives neighbor kid around all the time to all kinds of things, needs a ride to school, so they're acting as a private citizen. If they call me and say, will you authorize me to do this? This is not a school activity, you're, you're acting as a private citizen. So you do what it is you need to do as a private citizen with your neighbor, right? So I think that's the distinction there, is you make that determination. If you, if you're functioning as a teacher, providing transportation to a kid, then, then we need to go through these other processes. But if you're being mom to next-door neighbor, daughter's best friend, be mom. But just know that you're being mom.
Right, and, okay, and I, and I think it's that point and maybe you're helping to clarify it for me, that there are times when we have the responsibility to clarify for them that they are doing that as, as the neighbor, as friend to the other parent, that type of thing. That there's, there's a joint responsibility in a sense there that sometimes we have to step up and make sure they understand that that is separate.
All right, point of order. We got five minutes left. And we still have, you know, a few more to go. So we're going to have to extend time. Eleven o'clock. I'd say till 11:00. Motion, move to extend time till 11:00. Okay. No objection? Pardon me? Also, my name is.
Second.
Okay, no objection will be here hopefully at 11:00? Did you have any more?
No, I've, I've noted my concerns.
Okay, so administration, will you all be bringing this back differently?
Second reading, we'll try to clarify.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Moore?
I just have a question, and if it's not important, then it's not important. But is there a definition of employee or district employee? Does that include substitutes, 1099s, board members, paid volunteers, whatnot?
I can address that. So first of all, we, we had an extensive work group working on this since last spring. It involved FEA, FPA, SS. We had our McKinney-Vento liaison. We had our foster care and youth social, school, social service manager and Dr. McMorris, one of our social service managers, all working to help us address this. And when we said the word employee in this context, we talked about our support staff, our teaching staff, our coaching staff, anyone who was affiliated with the school in any capacity. And we talked numerous times in that work group since last spring. And I, full disclosure, we used the word substitute when we did.
And we have coaches that are considered employees? And maybe they only have student activities. SAS just lost the last, anyway, you know, I mean, that's their only affiliation with us is the fact that they coach. So that they would be included in this when they're working in their capacity as a coach.
Right.
Any other comments, questions about policy 578? So we go for the vote? Oh, public comment on policy 578, employees' rights and interests. Seeing none, back to the board for questions or comments? Seeing none, Sharon, can you call the roll?
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Banderant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Maradi?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to our next one. Action item, new business, policy 580, housing of students, first reading. Core value, safe environment, provide a safe learning environment. Policy 580 is a new policy and proposes guidelines regarding district employees housing students in their private residences. If this policy is adopted, district employees working in their capacity as district employees would be required to obtain the express permission of a student's legal guardian and the employee supervisor before housing any students in his or her private residence. The policy would provide an exception for emergency situations, but would require district employees to utilize all community resources prior to all allowing a student to remain in his or her private residence. Proposed policy 580 requires district employees to understand when they are acting in the capacity of a district employee or private citizen. The administration recommends adopting policy 580. Legal counsel has worked with the administration to develop a policy 580 and recommends adoption of the proposed policy. Need a motion? Move to approve first reading, public hearing in advancement, second reading of policy 580, housing of students. In a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and now we go for discussion.
So again, this is trying to, we've had employees get caught in this situation and struggle with how to handle this. And again, there's the private citizen piece, but we've had employees acting as employees in the way that they felt was in the best interest of students. And so this is, the purpose of this is to provide a very clear framework that if they feel like they need to do that as an employee, this is what needs to happen in order for that to take place. And we've had some employees come up, get, up against some disciplinary procedures around this type of thing. And again, there was no policy to address this.
Ms. Sanderson?
So what is this policy arising from? I mean, what is the focus on why we're opening employees of the district up? I mean, opening them up to potential disciplinary action or even further?
So they're getting themselves in hot water right now. And we've, this board has actually heard some pretty high-level discipline procedures around employees making this kind of decision without guidelines. And genuinely, I think the intent was good in acting as an employee, not as mom or neighbor, as an employee seeing a student in crisis and wanting to intervene and help. But there were no guidelines around how they might think about that as they make those decisions or who they might need to communicate with or steps they needed to take, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just have a real deep concern over this, over the last one and this one. Because I realize what you're trying to do is to create a guideline if an employee finds himself in that circumstance. But with implementing our homeless liaison, our foster care person, our social work person and our counselors, so the need is still rising even greater for this to be put in place.
Again, without any guidelines, people struggle with how to deal with these things. So I think it's, it's very individualized and it, I think we've seen a variety of different types of employees wanting to be helpful and feeling like they needed to help in, in sometimes a desperate situation and not knowing what the parameters might be or even. And again, we're not recommending this, but in the event that it's 10 at night and 40 below and a kid needs a place to stay, you are a committed staff person who's been, you know what I mean? So, so how do we work through this in a way? Hopefully, the, some of these other community resources can assist and we, you know, again, but sometimes the door has no room. Sometimes our, our help for teenagers is, you know, there's just not a lot of resources. So, so last, you know, not our first choice. But if, if in the moment it feels like this needs to happen, you know, how can we, what kind of guidelines can we provide around that? So.
Mr. Dorn? Oh, Colonel Fisher, I'm sorry. Colonel Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I just have a, a question regarding the balance of authority here. So if the employee requires the legal guardian's approval prior to, then what is the requirement for obtaining or exhausting resources from the state? So if the threshold for approval is the legal guardian and the supervisor, what is the employee's burden to exhaust other resources beyond the legal guardian's approval?
Well, again, I think a call to law enforcement, and Sean can speak to this too. In my experience, law enforcement sometimes can respond, sometimes won't. They don't have options. So we have, we have, and maybe you're asking, like, would they know what those options were?
Well, the, the, it really comes down to who you're calling first and whether or not you're calling the other, the, the other agencies. So if you have a legal guardian's permission, technically, you don't have to call anybody else. I've already got the permission of a legal guardian. So is the requirement to exhaust those other resources first before the legal guardian can grant permission? That, that's where I find this policy unclear. And maybe that additional language isn't necessary. And you could simplify it by merely requesting or requiring the permission of legal guardian. If there was no legal, I would say you would, might, might want to have some, you know, if you couldn't obtain permission of the legal guardian, here's what you have to do. But I, I just find that in conflict.
Sir, if I may address your question. I, I think this policy reinforces the current policy require, in which mirrors state law, requiring all district employees to report children who are subject to harm from either abuse or neglect. So there may be a circumstance where you can get in touch with the guardian, but that district employee is aware that that child is in harm and would be placed in continued harm if returned to the guardian. And then that would then trigger a different obligation for the district employee to notify law enforcement or OCS, which is under current existing policy. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's where it would be enough.
I think that, that answers the spirit of the policy. I just don't think the letter of the policy articulates that to a district employee. That's, that's my point, thank you.
Do we have a discussion? Mr. Dorn?
I like the fact that this has come up. And because even years ago, I experienced situations where, came to my attention by a staff member and stuff and know enough family situations. And so I think addressing it, it also gives employees a basis to say no. Where sometimes they feel a pressure to do it. I like the fact that there's that 24-hour provision in there. Because, yeah, it's late at night, it's emergency. One of the problems is that, that in case of emergency, it says you have to have the permission of, again, legal guardian and employee supervisor before you can allow the student to stand. But then we say, but you have to notify the supervisor within 24 hours. I think there is a question, especially in a number of our situations. I'm going to take a homeless child who has been camping out. And we know we have students who do that and it drops to 40, 50 below and they show up on your doorstep. There is no legal guardian to contact. Or if somebody who's 18 and they're in that situation or something else. So I think we have a conflicting, conflicting statement there that you need permission prior, but you don't have to notify someone until, for 24 hours. And I, I like the fact that within 24 hours you're doing it and I would keep that piece of it, I would adjust the other part. I think the intent is, and I, and I think we should promote this as an intent, not for the basis of discipline.
Correct.
We, we shouldn't be in that, if someone's in this conjury, we want to give them the, you know, they're professionals, they're dedicated and, and such. I mean, we want to give them some guidance to actually help limit their liabilities.
Exactly.
As well as other things.
Any other comments, questions? Any testimony from the public? Seeing none? Hold on, Mr. Dorn?
Okay, quick question. I'm assuming, and again, that's that distinction of knowing when you're employee or a private citizen, but we sometimes have situations where a force, a child has been put in foster care for the district employee. What is the responsibility? I mean, typically, it always happens, they'll notify the school because now it's new contact, address, those types of situations. But that's a totally separate situation to this because they're operating as a private citizen in that regard. Okay.
We're back to the board for any questions or comments? Okay, Sharon, can you call the roll?
Colonel Fisher?
No.
No.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Mrs. Dominique?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're getting down to the last bits and pieces here. We are now down to superintendent, board comments and committee reports. We pulled that one. And I guess we'll start with Colonel Fisher.
In the sense of time, I will avoid comment, thank you.
Okay. Colonel Bondurant?
Have another fair this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rice?
Just real quick, I was able to go to West Valley and watch the drill competition. It was very, very fun. I did have a niece that was competing, so you know, it was very enjoyable. And also to see that North Pole High School won the competition, so. I just do want to say, you know, during the holiday seasons, make sure that you guys are safe. When you guys are out there, roads get slick since it's been a warm winter so far, so please drive carefully and remember that someone's probably waiting for you at home. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
I just wanted to again thank those that came and testified, their feedback is greatly appreciated and one of the very precious ways that we can learn and listen to our community. And I also wanted to thank the administration and fellow board members for their hard work in late night, tonight. And if this is the last time I'll see you guys and to the community as a whole, happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
I'm going to pass on comments tonight, really surprised.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and testifying and really appreciate the CTE presentation, direction that district is going in to support the student track and learning process. Something students, I believe, have asked for and expressed a need for and commendable, commendable work and it's another way to provide another element of learning for students here in our district. I'm proud of that work. And thank those that came out to testify, to share with us their concerns and how they feel, you know, concerning the strategy, budget strategy and climate strategies and just how it's affecting them. And just thank you guys for your work and I'll reiterate the happy holidays and save times and with your family over the holidays, thank you for your work.
Mr. Alden?
I just want to say another thank you to our people who came and gave public testimony, that is the most valuable information. And then I also wanted to thank not only Ms. Taylor and Ms. Kraska and Mr. Domke for coming and giving the CTE report, but for all of the opportunities that it provides to not only myself, but the 400 students that we have at Hutch High School and then the 200 and some odd students that are part-time and the numerous other students around the district who get to take advantage of those. And I'm really grateful for being a Hutch student and I'm also really grateful for the partnership that we're able to have with West Valley so that myself, and I know there's four other students in my AP US history class that are from Hutch that go to West Valley, so thankful for that relationship that West Valley has been able to kind of take us with open arms and be part of our journey of learning and personalized education. That's all, thank you.
Dr. Gaborit, did you have any more?
Nope, just happy holidays and hope everybody has a nice restful break. And I think, what, like we're six weeks away from our next board meeting, so it'll be January 15th, is that? Regular meeting, yes, regular meeting. So, yeah, I hope everybody has a nice break, thank you.
Well, I would like to thank the University Park Falcons for the music tonight. Ilesman football team that has gotten first place championship five out of seven times. Congratulations to Ms. Michelle Brooks, that is truly phenomenal for her to be nationally recognized. She has a chance to be in number one, that'd be great for us. Kids voting, the 2018, oh, I already said that one. And also I would like to say my condolences to the family of President George H.W. Bush. He was a great man, I thoroughly enjoyed him when he was in place. And a lot of the things that I was seeing on TV about his, his funeral and all, they were showing the Dana Carvey impressions that used to be done of him and I thought that was really great for them to do that. And also Ms. Betty Davis passed away and her funeral will be on Monday. If there is nothing else, call for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.